The roll call that Dr. Leonard is not well tonight and so she won't be joining us. But everybody else is and we're grateful for that. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance and I invite you to join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board, the next item is the approval of the agenda. The recommended action is that the Board approve the agendas presented. Your motion?
Hold it.
Charles moves, makes the motion. Alina's not here to make a second. Do I hear a second?
I hear a second.
Thank you, Bruce. Well done. Are we ready to vote? Please vote. Bruce? Yeah, it came up.
Bruce must be having an existential crisis.
Yeah, Charles isn't as driven verbal if you don't...
I.
There we go. Thank you. The eyes, son of a gun, the eyes have it. All right, and the next item is public comments to address agenda items and we do have one to address the agenda item of safety. Our speaker is Sharita Thomas-Tate. Before you come up, Ms. Thomas-Tate, Dr. Thomas-Tate, I normally, okay, yeah, there's some, there's a little thing that I read. The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed, is recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public but will not comment or engage with speakers during the meeting. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary and she will distribute them to the Board members. Now, welcome, Dr. Thomas-Tate.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to kind of speak on the agenda item about the strategic goal briefly and I know that we're talking about focus area one, supporting student success, promoting, creating, maintaining a safe, secure learning environment that supports the emotional and physical well-being of students and your focus area being safety and security, student health and hunger, student social emotional health and engagement. And I just wanted to put out to the Board that in this discussion about safety and security that we consider not just the physical safety of the students who we are talking about, not just their safety with regards to buildings and structures and guns and police officers and violence, but we also think about their emotional and, their emotional safety and students, particularly the ones that I work with in the community. As always, I'm talking about students who are underrepresented and undersourced in your district. Oftentimes their safety issues have to do with whether or not they feel secure in the classroom with regards to the teacher, whether or not they feel secure with regards to policies that the district has, whether or not they feel secure regarding peer-to-peer interactions. And it's not just about violence. It's also about the way that they're being viewed, the way that they're being spoken to, the way that they're being addressed. And I want that to be, just to put it out there as a part of the conversation that you consider not just physical safety of the students but the emotional well-being of students. I know that you have social and emotional, but your strategic point seems to focus more on like mental health issues and I'm not talking just about mental health issues. I've used the word trauma before and oftentimes students who are facing racism in the schools are facing a traumatic experience on a daily basis as they go to school. So that's something that needs to be considered as we talk about their social emotional health is that being in an environment where you don't feel welcome, being in an environment where you're not engaged, being in an environment where you don't feel supported is a traumatic experience for students. And so that also contributes to their lack of feeling safe in the schools.
Thank you. Appreciate the input. Next is a report to the Board and this is the SCPTA Council Annual Update and we welcome Julia Spiva.
Thank you. This is my first time doing this so I'm a tiny bit nervous.
Doing great.
Thank you. I'd like to say we've had our first executive board meeting already and had a full house with 16 in attendance. We have our first general membership meeting tomorrow at Parkview. We're expecting a good turnout there. I'll see Dr. Dunwin there. I'd like to say Springfield Council, we love SPS. We appreciate being one of the many partners of SPS and we look forward to supporting all of our PTAs and PTSAs units across the district. With that said, we're looking to not only align ourselves with PTA, which would be our Missouri PTA and National PTA, also with SPS. So something new to go along with the new equity person. We have created, I've actually appointed, an advisor for Springfield Council of PTAs that will be our diversity and equity and inclusion advisor and that's Troy Allen. So we're excited to move forward with that. And then, just so you know, we met in the summer and our three main goals that we narrowed it down to was to increase membership by connecting with our 40 S PTA PTSA units on a personal level. So the executive committee, there are six of us, are going to split up and we are going to attend one of each of our units' meetings so that they can put a face to us and they can understand exactly what Springfield Council PTAs does. You may know, I mean, anywhere from reflections to RIF to scholarships and of course the clothing bank is our second biggest goal. So we're looking for community partners. I've already met with the foundation, with the Discovery Center, any and all that can help us keep that clothing bank and supporting the 3,000 students that we clothe every year along with the Kiwanis with the shoes. So, and the third thing, the only reason I agreed to even take this, it had to be fun. We've got to let other parents see that it is actually fun to be part of Springfield Council PTAs and PTA. So in conclusion, I do have a little handout. Is that allowed? Okay. That kind of shows...
You can give them the hand.
That kind of shows that where we're headed this year. Again, making it fun and also educating our units, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board for Julia?
So are the hours the same with the PTA, with the clothing bank as it has been in terms of bringing donations and/or families, their time to come and collect?
They have, and mainly mentions my name over that and we have put it out on social media, so there is a place on Facebook, Springfield Council PTAs or scptamoe.com is our website. So we do have a clothing bank schedule that shows the weekdays and the Saturdays and honestly if there's donations we can arrange at the Wash House, that's how they handle it sometimes.
I know that's a great service for many of our students and families.
Absolutely. We've got at least 3,000 a year.
What was that again?
Almost three, at least 3,000 SPS students every year shop. And I did volunteer and it's amazing. It absolutely is. And they truly do not get in there and they get to shop. They do.
Thank you. Next item is a first read of contracts, agreements, change orders and bids.
We'll be taking a few of these items tonight. Ms. Embry sends her regrets. She's caring for her mom in the Kansas City area and after her surgery, so I'll deal with this as well as other items that she would typically hold, but this is first read. You know, these are broken up into purchase orders as well as contracts, agreements, change orders and bids and they're broken up by price threshold. You have next two weeks to review. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. If there's any questions tonight, I can try to answer, but likely we'll be researching and following up with you, but they're posted for your review and follow-up and I'll get the right answer to you or get you connected with the right person.
Any questions for Ms. Embry's designee?
I'll phone a friend.
All right, we'll vote on that, we'll vote on these at our next board meeting. The next item is board policy and to my dismay, there are no board policy adoptions or revisions coming up yet.
You can get dismayed if you want to. I'll be gleeful.
Bruce is just wrong in disappointment.
My dismay and my relief.
I'm going gleeful.
We are through all of the MSBA updates, but we know that we are only 30 to 60 days away from a new set. Lots of legislation passed last year, so we will be working on them very soon, so enjoy them both.
We'll be back. Item 6.01 under new business is the local model compliance plan for special education and I think we welcome Brady.
Brady's here. Yeah, he'd come to the podium and just kind of update you on the process that we use and what this document represents. It's an annual requirement.
It's an annual compliance requirement, so essentially we have two options. We can adopt the model plan that DESI puts out or we can propose an alternative plan. So obviously the best pathway probably to maintain, make sure we maintain compliance is to adopt the model plan, which covers everything from how we identify students, conduct evaluations, hire personnel, just really every aspect of special ed. So this year, the model plan has a few minor changes, which I'm happy to discuss if you'd like, nothing substantial, so let me know.
I don't need you to discuss them, but I do need you to lend your expertise and tell me if you find them to be good changes.
Absolutely good changes. Probably the most substantial is a change in how we identify students with a speech and language disability. So a couple of the details on that, first of all, we no longer identify students at three years of age with speech or language. They would, we'll raise that to age four. As far as our general population of speech-language students, we will require interventions moving forward before we identify them in that area, which is, it's good because historically that has been our largest disability category. When you combine speech and language, out of the approximately 3,000 IEPs, it's about 500 to 600 and we have a lot more in addition to that that receive speech and language as a related service. So while we don't want...
Is the theory that it resolves?
Pardon?
Is the theory that it potentially resolves and you don't need to label?
Absolutely. And we've seen that work over and over again, so we will avert an unnecessary label.
I'm in.
This is first read and if you have any questions, it is about 174-page document.
It's rather lengthy, yes.
Brady has read it and knows what, how to make it go in our system every day, so.
That's great.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And 6.02 is medical stop-loss coverage. John, do you hear that?
Yes, I do. This is also first read and one of the requirements that we have as we are self-insured, we have a stop-loss coverage when a event hits 300,000 or a claimant hits 400,000, stopped on multiple events. We have a stop-loss gap coverage that we purchase. This is first read of that. We are currently in negotiations for that price. We don't have the full bid number yet typically. It runs around $1.5 million for the stop-loss coverage. It's paid out of the Health Benefit Trust fund account. We will have the number finalized, we expect for the next meeting for your review and we expect it to go up a little bit. If you remember, the claims were a little hot last year and we had a, I think a 16%, somewhere between 16% and 18% increase the previous year and are expecting another growth year unfortunately because of some of the claims.
Increasing costs or increasing claims?
And the 16 to 18% was the cost of the stop-loss coverage increase last year and we know claims went up this year because that's what we passed through the budget process of some adjustments that needed to take place. So we're expecting this to come in fairly hot again.
Again.
We will bring you final numbers, but we're 1.5 previously, but we've budgeted for this increase as part of the Health Benefit Trust. Has no effect on the operational model.
So we will, between now and the next board meeting, we will learn of that amount and then we will consider that with a vote at the next, at our next board meeting. First read is also on 6.03, which is iPad refresh.
As part of our technology plan, we have iPads at the K2 level, a set in every classroom, not one-to-one in that environment. This is our refresh, so we're getting past the life expectancy of our previous generation. This will be 1950 updated iPad minis and they, the capital budget that you approved previously this year for $739,000 to invest this over three years. We do a lease process like we do with our Chromebook technology. We are currently out to bid for the interest, best interest rate and would have that interest rate just in time for the next meeting, but expect all of that to fall within the budgeted amount that we put in the capital budget this year.
For three years of refresh?
Three-year. It's a three-year capital lease project and then we look at the life of those at the end of that year to determine can we get one more year out of them before we go back and refresh. So depending on the technology, Chromebooks certainly refresh on a three to four-year iPads. We can keep some and get a little more, but we try to keep that technology current. That's why we went from purchases to a continuous fresh, refresh cycle and this is, interest rates incredibly low, so.
Again...
We'll give you that number finalized as part of our recommendation on the 17.
Any further discussion, comments? Then let's move on to item seven and simply state that under the category of unfinished business, there are no unfinished business items. So we move swiftly on to item eight, which is the 2019 bond project updates and actions and we will be voting on several items. Dr. Shaw, welcome.
Thank you. So the first item is change orders. There are 12 different change orders in front of you. Those are representative of package one and two of our secure entrances. The total addition requested for package one is $30,398.20. You can see that there is over $220,000 available in contingency to fund that. And then in package number two, there's a total addition request of $13,241 and again contingency available of $175,689. I've given you some brief explanation of what those are that you can take a look at and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you've got them.
Having, having had a chance to look over them, they all seem plausible. My question is, does this seem like a normal number of change orders that's early in the process? Does it seem a little heavy, a little light?
Never being gone through, secure entrance work like this. I don't know that I can answer that for you, but when you look at package one, we are basically finished with all of those projects, so those are coming at the end. Package two, we are hopefully finishing up in the next couple of weeks, so I would look at this to be normal. When you talk about 19 separate projects going on at the same time, it's, it would be fairly normal. And again, with where these came in under budget initially, there's, we want to make sure that we're doing this right and no design is ever perfect and we will always have things that come up that we didn't see in the beginning.
Coupling that would be the generation of these buildings, so you've got Central, Studi, Pipkin, Reed, Jarrett, so these are some very aged buildings where it's hard to predict exactly what you're going to hit.
That makes sense. So it wasn't a matter that came in under budget, assuming we'd have to do a change?
No, there, there's a mix of, maybe there were some assumptions and/or after we got into it, there was something that needed change with the design, but in the situation with Pipkin, Reed and Jarrett, when they got everything out and the subfloors were in the shape that they were in, if we leave them the way they are, all the warranty is going to be void when we put the flooring down, so why do that? Why not spend a little bit of money, fix the floor and then it's done right? Things that we couldn't anticipate until we actually got into the project.
Generally speaking, change orders arise out of uncovering conditions that were covered and could not have been discovered during bidding or even during design. It could be an omission where the, there was something that maybe should have been included in the construction plans, didn't get included. And then some are due to a change in circumstances. The owner walks out there and says, "This is not really what we need and I didn't understand it before then." So the burden then for us is to, as we look at these, is to determine whether these are reasonable for the scope of work and we count on Travis and his group to vet these before they come to us. And from what I can tell, they look reasonable for the scope of work. It's represented there.
Do we need anything, like a motion?
I think we do, that the Board approved the construction contracts for change orders as presented.
Yes.
Jill makes the motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Denise seconds. Is there any further discussion? Let's vote.
Thank you, Travis.
You're welcome. Oh, but he's not done.
No.
Thank you for part one, Travis.
The eyes have it. Motion's approved. 8.02 is an easement at the Early Childhood Center.
We've got a small additional easement that's being requested from City Utilities for a perpetual right-of-way. It's along a sewer line that currently exists and they currently have an easement on the sewer line. It's on the south part of Carver Middle School property for our Early Childhood Center. And so this essentially, this is where they're wanting to utilize that easement to also run permanent power and so this would essentially take the sewer line easement and make it a full utility easement and so the request of the Board was that they grant that. It's a very small section. If you looked at the attached document on four docs, you'll see that it's a very small corner highlighted. It's this little section right here. The rest of this that runs is actually another property and they also had to provide approval, foresee you to do that on their property, but this is the only piece that you're actually approving that's on our property. So it's a very small easement that's being requested.
Any discussion on this easement? This easement.
I feel I've had plenty of discussion. Need a motion?
I do, that the Board, excuse me, let me, let me read the...
It's lengthy. This one's a little long.
Oh, here we go. "That the Board approved granting a utility easement to the City of Springfield Board of Public Utilities for an easement 15 feet in width for the SPS Early Childhood Center located 3373 West Battlefield Road for water, gas, electric or communication lines and services to be above ground or underground. The President of the Board, Tim Rosenberg, is authorized and directed to execute this easement on behalf of the district."
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Charles. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. The eyes have it. Next item is 8.03, Civil Engineering Professional Services.
This item is a proposal from Anderson Engineering for the civil engineering services for the Hillcrest High School renovation project. It not only does the civil engineering for the project, but it also does surveying and along with the civil engineering, the scope of work, the site demolitions, layout and dimension utilities, grading, details, erosion, stormwater and landscaping. So this is similar to all of the other civil engineering proposals that have been presented on the rest of our projects. We've not used Anderson at this point. This is one that we have vetted through our RFQ. It's a, we've got two proposals on this project and this was the lower of the two proposals and this is one that Buxton C. Big Todd approves of as well and likes to work with. And so the present, the proposal would be for the $33,900 fee for civil engineering.
Any comments or questions from the Board? I assume that's what we've been budget, what you anticipated it might be?
That's, that's actually the most reasonable civil engineering proposal that we've gotten to this point.
Okay.
So it's very reasonable.
Well, the recommended action is that the Board approve the civil engineering services as presented. Your motion? Does that move? Charles moves to... Second. That. Jerry seconds. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. Thank you. Eyes have it. And the next item is for our approval is Architectural Services.
So Architectural Services have been negotiated with the team of SAP and Paragon for the renovation and addition of Williams Elementary as part of one of the 2019 bond projects. Their services include schematic design, design development, construction documents, permitting and bidding and construction administration. And consistent with our other renovation projects, the proposal is for a 7% fee to be paid based on the hard construction costs at the end of the project. Those estimated fees based on a construction estimate of $14,264,586 is approximately $998,521 and again, that's based off of what the hard construction costs will come in at and this will all be in collaboration with, as a construction manager at risk project that will be on the next information piece after this. So the recommendation would be to approve the 7% fee for the renovation and addition at Williams Elementary with SAP and Paragon as a team.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Motion, the recommended actions that the Board approve the commitments for architecture services as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Jill.
Second.
Denise seconds. Thank you. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote.
All right. It's exciting. I like doing things at Williams Elementary.
Yeah, you too.
It's awesome. We see someone in the room who might be working.
The eyes have it. We have architects.
It's good to have architects. I always say...
I think so. I confess to that. And then continuing with Williams. Travis?
Yeah, as mentioned, it is the intent of the team to utilize the construction management and risk delivery method for the renovation project at Williams Elementary. The reason I'm bringing this as an information item is because according to Missouri law, this has to be presented to the Board and give you notification, the intent to do this no less than seven days prior to an RFQ going out for that construction manager at risk process, delivery process. So it doesn't need your approval, it's simply us letting you know this is the intent to utilize the same process that we're currently using with Hillcrest and we will then follow the rest of the Missouri statutes moving forward and then bring a recommendation to you later for a construction manager at risk.
Noted. Is there any comments or questions from the Board concerning this?
Determined that we would use the construction manager at risk rather than we haven't on the others.
So we've, a couple items. One of the things that we learned early before Hillcrest was that this method is a very good method for renovation projects and the early experience that we've had in the first couple of months on the Hillcrest project has been very positive. We've been able to have the construction manager, which essentially is the general contractor, onboard from the beginning. There have been items that they've been able to recognize from early on that maybe the architects said, "Hey, what about going this way?" Or use this method and the CM was right on top of it and ready to say, "You know what? You can go that route, but it's going to cost you this much more money to do that." It's just, and by having that positive collaborative approach early on and recognizing that we really feel good about this method over the traditional design, bid, build process, it makes sense for us to move forward with this, knowing that we've got another renovation project coming. It's not going to be as complex because we will have students off-site, but anytime you deal with renovation and you can have that third party along with you from the very beginning to work with the owner and the architect, it brings value.
Like the other, the ones that we've already put out, we were trying to do that while we were going through the bond process at the same time, so we had to be ready to go. So getting the architect to design ahead of bringing that CM at risk was a more logical and traditional approach, but now that we know, we're jumping into some major renovation projects, this is the route, route we're recommending here. Jarrett is still a hard bid, right, because it's a brand-new construction, but these more complex renos, we're feeling like this is a good approach.
Is there a premium? I mean, I agree, it's a great idea. I think it's the way to go. I just, is there a premium to do that versus the other way?
You'll never know.
Because you don't have the bid to compare it to of what you would have...
You'll never know, but there's...
You'll only know from process that...
There's, there's plenty of evidence, there's plenty of evidence that it doesn't cost more, it just costs differently. Some of the costs are allocated a little bit differently, but what, but the value is greater because you have the expertise with respect to schedule, technique and, and purchasing and just all those things from a contractor's perspective on the team at the very beginning of the, of the design process. I don't consider a check and balance necessarily against the architect, it's more of, it's true collaboration.
At the end of the day, it's total project done, it's better. It's a hot...
I think there's greater value in it.
And we start seeing accurate cost estimates for the project much earlier on in this process.
But what, but the value is greater because you have the expertise with respect to schedule, uh, technique, and, and purchasing and just all those things from a contractor's perspective on the team at the very beginning of, of the design process. I don't consider a check and balance necessarily against the architect. It's more of, it's true collaboration.
At the end of the day, it's total project done, it's better.
I think there's greater value in it.
And we start seeing accurate cost estimates for the project much earlier on in this process. So it's just an information item?
Yeah, we, we will get a chance to vote on this when the selection is made and the agreement comes forward later this fall. Travis, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, is it my final thank you?
Yes.
Roger out.
All right, there we go. Uh, the next item is nine point oh one, Public Comments to Address Non-Agenda Items. And I have none. So we'll go on to Strategic Discussion. Now, before we do that, it, we've been in, in, in conference for thirty minutes. Do we need to take a break? Because this is going to be a while.
Maybe midway?
Like two hours and fifteen minutes?
No, it will not be that long. I promise it will not be that long.
That might be next month.
Let me get my clicker. So we, we welcome Dr. Brett Range to the podium. And Brett, uh, we may at some point request a break, but otherwise, just take us right through it, please.
You tell me what, when you're ready to be, for me to be quiet for a little while and I'll be quiet. So I'm good.
As a reminder, as Dr. Range kicks off, this starts us through our end-of-year reports. Strategic Plan is broken into four focus areas with a total of six goals. We have end-of-year reports that we reflect back on last year, and then we'll have mid-year reports that come in the spring that look at the first semester of this year. So this is Focus Area One, Goal One.
So good evening. I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to be here, and my team is happy to be here, for really for two reasons. The first one is, um, if you've got a chance to read the report and then you'll also see it in the presentation. This, at this point now, we're able to see trend data over two years. So we're able to see how we're trending on some of these metrics that we have set are high value. So that's number one. We're excited about the trend data. And then number two, um, when you analyze that trend data, it continues to show, here are some areas that we need to celebrate because we're doing good work here. And then there are all, there's also a lot of, several areas of inequities still in the system that we need to talk about. We need to address with strategy, and that's why we're standing here, to try to get better in those areas. And so we feel like we're getting better at that process as this data gets a little bit more and more precise. So as Dr. Jungman said, we're, we're here to give you the end-of-year report and Focus Area One, Goal One, um, from last year. There are four focus areas, um, within the strategic plan that we will do this process with on each of them. So we'll have a end-of-year report. We'll also be back about, I think, February to give you a mid-year report on this goal, on our work, uh, as we move through the fall and into early winter. Um, so those are the focus areas. We are in Focus Area One, which is Student Success and Learning Support. And you can read the Goal One there. It's really revolving around safe, uh, secure learning environments that support the emotional and physical well-being of students. So the work in this goal most closely aligns with the departments that I supervise, which is student, uh, Student Support School and Student Services, which is school police, it's health services, it's, uh, school counseling. And so that's why my team comes to the table when we talk about Focus Area One, Goal One. Um, so before we dive in here and, and get messy, we're going to kind of step back and look again at the district at a thirty-thousand-foot view level. So this is the district enrollment as of the count date, last January, January thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. So you see we've got, uh, about twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixteen kids enrolled on that day. And the left-hand side breaks it down by lunch status, free, full, and reduced. And the right-hand side are the student subgroups, um, which we report back to Desi. So you can see how we trend. If you looked at those numbers, um, if you had the report from last year, they don't, they don't look drastically different than what we reported last year. So then, taking that information, drill it, drilling it down one level, you break it down by elementary, middle, and high school. And there's a couple of things that I want to draw your attention to on this slide. So the first row here is lunch status as you move across. So lunch status, the free lunch status at the elementary level and middle school level is not that, they trend very closely. Um, but the free status here at the high school level drops down a little bit to thirty-seven point nine. Then when you go down in that next line, the full pay, again, middle and high school, mirror close to each other, and then full pay here comes up a little bit to fifty-four. And then reduce, reduce, when you look at our reduced numbers and also how they trend on academic measures and also our climate and culture measures, they trend very closely with our full pay kids.
And then when you... We do break that out. A lot of the time you get the free and reduced number, right? But that takes us up to that fifty-three percent, but truly, our targeted gap exists between free and full pay, reduce function, attendance-wise, academic achievement-wise, most like our full pay students.
And so when we go into the metric analysis here in a couple of slides where it starts to get, uh, pretty deep, we don't include a separate line item for reduce because they trend very similar to our full. We really look at the, the, the gap between free lunch kids and our full pay kids. Then when you go into student subgroups, you can see that, how the white, black, Hispanic populations break out across those same grade spans. One of the, the, the student subgroups that I wanted to draw your attention to was the, the multi, uh, students here at seven point four. It's five point eight here, but then at the high school level, it comes down to three percent here. So there's, there's a, a difference in three percent and seven point four percent at the elementary and high school level. That's just, it's, it's interesting to note that that student demographic changes across that, those grade spans.
And you would note that the older, they get nine through twelve is diverse, but it's getting more diverse in middle school and more diverse at the elementary level as the majority population is smaller in each of those groups. So it would project that this system and this community will continue to get more.
They're becoming more diverse as we move.
I was thinking of it differently. That's actually better than what I was thinking.
Well, my question was, students, high school, do they still self-report?
I, I think...
In terms of their...
That's a good question. I'd have to, I, I, I think it can go both ways. I think their parents can report, and I think they can self-report. But yes, I think it goes both ways.
That was always interesting and fascinating.
But if you're looking at a true picture of, even though the numbers don't show that, because I think it is some self-reporting, that your free, reduced lunch, your elementary population is probably your best indicator of what's going on in your district.
Yeah, because it's filling the form out there. The parents...
They're doing, they're doing it.
Parents fill in there.
That, I mean, that's what I've always used. If somebody says, even though we may promote one number, you really look at it, it's...
That's where we know engagements, though, which is between parents and connections of kids and...
So, so that's, that, we, we, we present this to you because we're going to dive deep. And what we're really going to do is dive deep in these subgroups to look where, where the gaps lie between these subgroups on some, some of our performance measures. But the demographic information's important to start the conversation with.
Charles had a question?
Charles, you have a...
No, I don't.
He was moving his pencil.
Drawing my pencil.
Drawing your pencil. Okay, so, um, um, we brought, we brought the priority metrics forward last fall. And so as a refresher, the paper, the, the first section of the paper lays out kind of the history of how we came to this. And this slide is trying to, trying to get at that just in one slide. So in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the administration-led senior leadership team, so senior leadership team is all the directors and all the school principals, through conversations about, okay, what are we going to? There's a bunch of data points that we talk about in school all the time. What are the most important? Which ones are we going to track over time and say, and really measure? This is, this is, these are indicators of us doing a good job in certain areas, discipline, engagement, academics. And what we came to consensus on are the ones that we're going to lay out here, and we're going to lay them out next month in October. And we call those the priority metrics, and they appear in two places. They appear on the climate and culture scorecard, which contains the engagement, safety, and discipline metrics. And then the academic success and graduate outcomes scorecard, which has our academic measures and obviously grad rate and, um, things like that. So that is the meat of this presentation, is the priority metrics. And that's where they appear in those two scorecards. You have a copy of that scorecard, the district, elementary, middle, and high school, in the report. So the report, the, the report has three, it's got four appendices that have district, elementary, middle, and high school scorecards there that for your, uh, if you'd like to spend some time looking at that. We also produce those at the grade span level, elementary, middle, and high school. And then every school site gets a scorecard. And they get scorecards a couple ti, multiple times a year, usually at the quarters, to refresh those metrics to make sure that leader and the teachers in that building know where they're tracking on these metrics. Okay?
At the risk of imposing on the goodwill of my colleagues, I will renew my objection to the notion of scorecard rather than dashboard. Scorecard ranks, and I'm not sure that's the, that's the direction. I think dashboard helps us know where we are and enables us to, uh, change direction. With that, I was simply stipulating. On we go.
Noted.
No, just go with, we call it an ongoing objection. It's my line of work.
Noted. Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. And you, and you, and Charles, you did say that last year, too.
And I'll say it next year.
Yes. Almost certain.
Okay, so, uh, again, um, you've got a copy of this. You've got access to it in the report. Um, and so, uh, this is really our attempt to say, these are the safety, engagement, and, uh, discipline metrics that, that we value within the system in one location, so leaders have it and they can use that tool to drive instruction, drive strategy in their building. Um, for the purpose of this report, these are the metrics that are going to be reported out. So they mostly revolve, they totally revolve around, uh, safety and attendance. There are some engagement metrics here, too. So it's student and family perceptions about school safety, safety drills, just accomplishing the drill, percent of students who considered suicide in the last twelve months, percent of students who have been bullied on school property in the last twelve months, percent of, and then we get into our discipline metrics, which are percent of students with discipline, frequency rates of students with discipline, loss of instruction due to discipline. And then we have two attendance priority metrics. First one's ninety-ninety, which is how the state holds us accountable on that metric, and then just average daily attendance rates, or ADA. So those are, those are the, the, the metrics that we're going to discuss this evening. There are other engagement metrics on that card that are going to come up in the next report because they better fit there than they do here. So, um, it's just not a clean break every time, but, um, these fit best in this goal report. Now, that being said, there are other data points that our departments collect that we do consider important. And we call those process measures. They just don't appear on the, on the, uh, scorecards. Um, so it's, it's examples of things, the things this evening you're going to hear about, school police response times, flu vaccines given, number of students referred for mental health needs. Those are all important data pieces to measure and make sure we're getting better over time at, but they don't appear on the scorecards because they didn't rise to the level of being a priority metric. But we'll report on them tonight, and they're in the report. So, that being said, I'm going to turn the clicker over to some of my colleagues here. I, Jim is going to go next, so Jim will talk about the school safety, uh, strategy here. I will come back up during this presentation to take on one of the priority metrics that deals with student and family perceptions about school safety. Then Jim will take the baton back from me and finish his section. Gene will come up to talk about health, uh, health services initiatives. Rhonda will take the social, emotional, mental health piece and Strategy one point, one point three. And then I'll finish with one point, one point four. And one point, one point four will really hold most of where the metrics are at, where the discipline and the attendance or metrics are at. And I'll do my best to go through that slowly and make sure I try to explain it to the best of my ability. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to my friend and colleague, Jim Farrell, to take over school safety.
Always need my tutoring. Um, let me say, and you'll hear from me every year, that I have to do this. It's never easy following an educator that's well-versed at speaking. So this was our calls for service this year for school police. Okay, and the easiest way to explain that is a call comes in either to our dispatch center or to an officer from a principal, or it's self-initiated by an officer. This is just the schools. Uh, we did not include other sites in this one because that would, might be GSC, for instance. Uh, but there was forty-seven hundred and twenty-five total calls, with a slight decrease in the high school level uh, and some increase in the elementary and middle school level. Some of that we're working on with principals. Some of, some of the calls may not require officer response that we're getting called to. So that, that's just continual work that we do with everybody all the time. And, uh, they're getting better at it even this year. Response times, um, you know, um, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, look phenomenal, and they were. Um, I would tell you eighteen, nineteen is pretty phenomenal also. We're still just over a minute and a half response time on Priority Ones. Um, to explain a Priority One, that's imminent danger of physical bodily, bodily injury or, or, it's bad. I mean, Priority One is a bad call for service. That's the easiest way. I know how to explain it. Um, so with that said, none of those Priority Ones were at elementary schools. They were, uh, there was one at a middle school. Um, I believe, uh, there were four at a high school. And a couple were at other sites. And then our Priority Twos, which is the majority of our calls, um, it's not going to stop education from taking place. We're not going to evacuate a building. Uh, we're not going to go into a lockdown, uh, an internal lockdown, if you will. Um, we're still under a four-minute response time on those. And then Priority Threes aren't up there, but Priority Three would be something that, you know, we could actually respond to the next day. And, and that's just, you know, that could be anything. Okay, we'll get that tomorrow. We're kind of backed up or whatever.
Yeah, I'm, tell me again, how many Priority Ones you had? You, you kind of rattled them off. I didn't, I didn't add them up.
I'm sorry. Yeah, um, we had none at the elementary level. Uh, we had one at the middle school level. I believe it was four at the high school level.
Okay.
And two at other sites.
So I didn't think of it.
Because initially I was going to ask why there was such a difference in the time in those two intervening years, but the reality is there's so few incidents like this.
Sample is so small.
And we can't really draw anything from it.
It's under ten.
Yeah.
For, out of...
Which is good news, by the way.
Out of, uh, forty-seven hundred and twenty-five calls.
And if there's an officer close, that helps.
Obviously, yes. I mean, and, and in most of those, we have officers in the buildings.
Right.
Uh, we've really pushed, um, our patrol response to our elementaries. Um, so that eliminates, that's why, and that's my opinion why we're at zero on a lot of the, on, on that response for Priority Ones at elementary level. Priority Two, I mean, we're just going to go all, all the time. So this is, uh, I've been asked to do this one, but probably because our folks get it every couple of years also. Um, but this is the number of staff that were CPR, first aid, and AED certified or trained in. Um, you know, the AEDs came in just recently. And, and I will tell you, um, nobody thinks about them until we use them. And, uh, they're lifesavers. Uh, I've seen them used by, uh, a staff member of Springfield Public Schools on, on a, on a car accident on the street. This person was helping a Springfield officer. They will save a life. Uh, those AEDs were a, a good investment, and they're simple. I mean, the, the training, it's, we're not asking a lot of anyone to do it. CPR is, is just the obvious need. We need it.
How many of, of our staff, oh, and that's how many you trained last year?
Yes.
If you had a percentage, how many of our staff are CPR-trained? Would you guess? I mean, because, because once you've done it, I mean, if they did it in seventeen and eighteen, they don't have to do it again, but...
Well, all of them.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, all the coaches are, all the nurses are, and all of the principals are on an annual basis. So the coaches are every two years, but the, the, uh, nurses are on an annual basis. And then all the coaches are, like I said, every two years. So we have a rotation of those, and then we also offer those first aid and CPR trainings every month. Um, and we also go out to school sites, so we try and encourage them to participate as well at the school sites. So we take it to the schools so that other staff members can participate. In addition to that, with the AED training, they offer that just separately, but it's also included within the CPR and first aid training. So if you take one of our classes, that's included within, within the training and certification. But then also in addition to that, we just offer AED training so that people can get comfortable with, okay, so I take this out, now it's my next step. So we, we really work to try to get additional staff trained each year since we've had those available.
Let me rephrase the que, pull a lawyer here, rephrase the question. Teachers? And, and those, I mean, I know these, the coaches are required, but what about teachers?
It varies from site to site. As far as numbers go, I would say it's, there's not very many teachers that, as a whole, are, are certified in CPR first aid. However, we've also asked the question of, are there those that get training in other places as well? So I began to collect that information to, from the nurses to say, let's, let's see how many people in your building are trained. So we'll have that as an update when we talk in the spring as well, so. And, and we'll get some data on the specifics as far as numbers of staff per site for you guys, too. The other thing that's happening, too, is that for graduation, it's a requirement that we offer CPR, uh, for, for kids and that we do training for them as well. So we up those numbers, too, for provision of training. And we also want to make sure that they know how to use an AED as well, so we'll be including that within our course.
Sorry, didn't mean to divert you there.
I don't have any luck following eloquent speakers. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Range.
Thank you.
You did great.
Well, he's going to be back up, so he's not done yet. Not, not let him off the hook. Okay, so I'm going to cover, uh... Okay, so I'm going to cover this one, because this is the first priority metric, and this metric deals with student and family perceptions about safety priority metric, sorry, safety, and then a gap closure analysis. So, before I dig into the details, each of the metrics that I go through in, on this one, and the attendance and discipline are going to be laid out the same way. You're going to see this big chart, and then we're going to do a gap analysis to try to determine where there's still gaps existing between student subgroups. So what this one is, it's going to provide disaggregated student perceptions about safety over a two-year period. So the big chart is a two-year period, last year versus the prior year, and the difference in how they rated the items on the survey. The, what, what this survey is measuring is student and actually family perceptions on those four things. Do they feel safe at school? Do they think discipline's fair? Do they think teachers enforce rules? And number four, do they, principals keep a safe environment? So those four metrics are rolled up into one metric, and then we assess how much they agree on that, okay? And then, the, 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 again, that key piece then is doing the gap closure analysis to determine where their gaps are at, okay? So each of the metrics are going to be laid out that way, we'll start with this one. So this first chart is going to be, it's big, it's busy, and I'm going to walk through it here. So the left-hand side is us breaking it down by student demographics. So you can see free, full, white, black, Hispanic, ELL versus non-ELL on the left-hand side. The top of this is the years versus, and the difference between those years. So I didn't include FY18 for space because it had been super busy had we had that on there. But what we're doing is comparing that number to the prior year. So we were down minus three, so it's, it's safe to assume that the year before that we were at 59%, so we came down. So you can see, these are the columns we're focusing in on, these different cells here, okay? And we want to see green, we don't want to see red, because we want this metric to go in the positive direction. We want it to go, their perceptions to increase and be favorable about the things that we're asking them.
Can I ask a question about the four items that you roll up into one? They, some of them seem really consistent with each other, but feeling safe at school and fairness of discipline don't necessarily seem to be getting at the same thing. So I, if you roll all of those up into one, are we losing some of the detail there?
That's a great question. I mean, that, that's, that's a great question.
It's a project that we use our Panorama Pro, uh, service platform, and they use those four questions nationally, so that's why we use it to also get some data, and that's their recommended four roll-up questions. And I, I agree, they get at a little different things, but they are a perception of the, if discipline is handled fairly, I feel more safe sometimes. I think there is some potential where I just aggravated.
Fairness seems to give equity to me, and feeling safe less so.
Do we roll them up, or, or, do, that's just the survey rolls them up?
Survey rolls them up.
So, we can't, we can't disaggregate?
We can look at each question individually.
You can, so you can, you can get the, you can get feeling safe at school by itself?
Yeah, we get every question and we get a roll-up.
Okay.
Yes, we can get it each, each question individually. So again, to, to, to draw your eye to this slide, student demographics here, year by year, this is the district, here's elementary, here's middle school, here's high school, and we're, we're wanting to see positives on this different slide over that two-year period, okay? So, that's, that's the, the, the year-by-year comparison, the two-year comparison, and then when you go into a gap analysis, this is really the important slide, they're all important, but this, this is my favorite slide, because it shows you where the gaps either got bigger, or they got smaller. So here, again, on the left-hand side are the student subgroups. We're comparing free versus full, white versus black, white versus Hispanic kids, and ELL versus non-ELL kids. And so, we are looking in here to see, where did the gaps grow, and where did they shrink, or where were there no gaps? Because we said, the NG means there was no gap between their performance on that metric. So, when you look at this slide, you've got, you know, minus eight here, so at the high school level, we did a pretty good job of closing the gap between the white and black students' perceptions about school safety. However, white versus black students' perceptions of safety at the elementary level grew by six. So it grew there, and that's not what we wanted to do. Again, this slide, we want to see green, more green than we do red, okay?
The other thing, yeah, we want you to look at both points, you want a status point and a growth point, right? And a gap closure point. So if you go back on slide, because the status is important, too, because elementary in general is at 72% versus high school at 45%. So the status is much higher across the board for elementary than it is middle and high, which is what we expect, it's what the data tells us typically to play out, but then we want to look at closure also and growth, right? So, it's a multitude of ways to analyze the data to determine where we're doing well and where we can do bad.
I think the absolute numbers, oddly, they're higher than I would have guessed, right? Given utter failure to deal with gun violence in the country, et cetera, et cetera, I'm surprised they're as high as they are. Now, they need to be higher, I think they need to be higher, to be sure, but we have failed utterly, at least in that, and it's, you know, it's part of our, sadly, part of our culture today, that, that there's any improvement there strikes me as better than I had expected.
And knowing that most of that violence typically happens at a secondary level, knowing that our high schools moved in a good direction, but opportunities certainly persist at the middle school level. Elementary already pretty darn high, right? But saw some slipping, so. And then, I think the important thing is, each of these points tell a part of a story, but they don't tell a whole story. So, we'll follow this up with attendance data, and you'll see, while some safety data might be low at the elementary level in this perception, but that's the biggest growth in attendance. So it did not correlate into a attendance growth or gap, so it's part of a holistic picture.
So again, the gap closure analysis for, for those student subgroups, we're looking for greens, we're, we're not so much looking for reds, we don't want to see reds, but to see where we have the highest gap, the, the highest gap growth, and then how we close the gap, the greatest.
The screen, if you want, just see it.
With the white and black students at the high school level. So this slide is the family perceptions about school safety. We don't disaggregate this out by student subgroup because we don't collect that information when it goes out. But, the positive thing here to note is that it was green across all levels, so they, their perceptions went up over that two-year period, when you compare last year to the prior year, plus two, plus three, plus two, and plus two.
So I'd just sit down now if I were you.
Not that easy.
There's no way you have anything that good to say.
Not that easy. No, actually, we do, once we get to loss of instruction with discipline, we're, we're very pleased on that metric.
Okay.
So, this is, this slide, a lot of text, but this is the summary slide. So, each one of these metrics has one of these that are associated with it. So the first one, the first thing I want to say is this, so I, I've got 32 cells here, so when you scroll back, there are 32 different cells underneath those columns, because there's four rows, I'm sorry, there's eight, eight cells, four rows each. We moved nine of them in the right direction, okay? We moved 20, actually, we didn't move, 21 of them moved in the wrong direction, and then two remained unchanged. The largest increases were at the high school level, which we, Dr. Jungman talked about, largest decreases were at the middle school level, and black elementary students and Hispanic middle school students had the largest decreases in opinions about school safety. Then when you bump down to the, the closure, the gap closure analysis, there are 11 cells on this chart, there were, there were several of them that didn't have a gap, so we're, we don't include them in the analysis because there was no gap. There were 11 that did have a gap, and we closed the gap on three of them. Three of them moved in the right direction, four moved in the wrong direction, and four were unchanged, and the largest gap increase was at the elementary level between white and black students. And again, that last bullet point there, all the data cells and family perceptions and school safety moved in the right direction, they were all green. So each of the analysis that I get to in the end, when we get to discipline and attendance, will be laid out this way.
Just quick question, so these are student perceptions, what grades do we start?
Good question, third grade, 13th, 12th grade.
Third grade, okay. Three through, so three through five would be our elementary grades. So I'm just wondering about the understanding of the elementary students on those questions asked.
It's a good question, it's a good question.
I think they are a little different formatted at the grade levels that are age-appropriate, I can't speak to that specifically, but I know there are some grade or age-appropriate wording.
Yes.
It's a good question. So, I'm going to come off that, this is the next priority metric that Jim can, can address, which is his drill completion, so I'll turn the, the mic and clicker back over to him.
Well, this, this is where we get into the stuff I'm, I'm pleased with. This is, I'm starting my fourth year with the district, and I've come to live, breathe, and eat school safety, if you will, whereas before, that wasn't as big a focus for me. So, one of the things that we've worked on is our safety drills, and, and we've actually reduced our total number of drills required, but what we've done, and what we've worked at continually and will continue to work on, is making the drills better. And, and the best way I can explain better is to tell you that we're, we're requiring staff members to think, not just go through the paces. We've gotten the fire department, we're working with Springfield Fire, and then the local fire departments out in the county that service our schools, to come on fire drills, and they've, they've been wonderful. They've pointed out some things that school police did realize, like, hey, if you have all the kids there, that's typically where we would park our truck, you know? Okay, so now we know, and that goes into the emergency plan. So for this year, and we've done things a little different for this year because of how we're working on our drills and the total reduction, we're, we're almost at 100% across the board. And I would tell you that 99%, there was a different process also this year, so it's quite possible we may have lost that 1% in the shuffle, you know, like it got done and we didn't capture it at school police, which is possible. But I don't have a real answer, I think, it's my opinion, the elementary schools got their drills done, and they were, they're very good about coordinating with us and getting it done. But as you can see in the previous years, where they were done a little different, the numbers are a little lower.
So tell me, how many are we, how many firestorm and intruder drills?
Four, three, and three. Which, requiring three intruder drills?
That's a lot.
For those that don't know, that, that's, that's huge. And to me, that is, you know, more applicable, unfortunately, than a fire drill, which is why we were able to, and, and I'll just give credit where credit's due, Ms. Embry, I don't know if she strong-harmed the chief, the fire chief, or she just got it done, and, and we were able to coordinate with them, and they're like, we're all about making quality drills. So, the numbers reduced, and it's been nothing but good, I, I feel. We've gotten positive feedback from principals, we've gotten positive feedback from our officers, and Springfield Fire's tickled, to, to say the least.
And this, Jim, is in reference to reducing number of fire drills and increasing number of intruder drills?
I, I think where we're at, as far as the need right now, but yes, we did, we do, we were, we were required to do 10 fire drills a year by city ordinance, which is, as you can imagine, why staff members were going through the paces. And, and that just becomes not good, because as we found, as we were, we were helping and teaching and working with the fire department, you know, you, you just stand in a hallway and go, you can't come down this hallway now, there's a fire here, and they weren't, and when you talk them through, you're like, hey, you know this building better than anybody, find me a different route out. They're able to take their class and go just a completely different way. And it, it, there's no, you know, I mean, we've all heard the horror stories, the screaming and the yelling, and trying to make it super realistic, some of that is, is age, that, you've got to follow the age group you're dealing with, but quite frankly, I'm not sure a, a lot of that is needed.
And some of the programs changed for fire drills?
Yeah, it's been awesome, it really has. I think we're, I think we're better prepared now, and we're only, we're doing less than half the drills we were for a fire than we were before. So, some of our highlights that fell under school police a little bit, and this is, it's just amazing that, number one, that we did this as a district, because I don't know that many folks understand how few places our size do this for their employees, but we were able to teach ALICE training, which is your intruder training, and emergency preparedness at, at all sites for all staff members. And we got a total of 3,466 SPS employees that went through that, and we got it done in the first quarter. So, it, it was a push, and the reception from staff members was overwhelmingly supportive and, and pleased that they were getting that. Additionally, what we did was, we're like, well, this is obviously, Dr. Jungman made it clear it's going to be an annual thing, so we're like, okay, well, we, we're going to need more instructors. So, we did the smart thing, because when you host, you get some free seats, and we hosted an ALICE training here, for instructor-level ALICE training, and we were able to put seven of our officers through that training. So now we're at a total of 11 officers that can go throughout the district and teach ALICE as needed. Then, the Center for Education Safety came down, they provided threat assessment, threat team assessment training, and if anybody's paid attention to the school safety topic, this is, this is the new, you know, and, and the reality is, is a lot of places have been doing it for a long time, they may not have just titled it, and I would actually tell you, we were one of them. I feel like we've always kind of done our own threat assessment, it just probably was a little less formal. So, as a result, we piloted it and we're, we're adopting it as a protocol, of which we're also involving local law enforcement in addition to us and, and SPS. So, and here's, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Jungman last year, and one of the things he told me was, he goes, I really wish things were more uniform. And if it would have been appropriate to hug him at that moment, I would have, because I'm, I, I like things to be uniform, I like a substitute to be able to go to any building and know how it works. And so that was one of our priorities, was we standardized our visitor management system with Hall Pass. And, you know, I, it doesn't get better than that, I think. I mean, we're, we're actually forcing people to come into one place, it's going to be the same at every school, and by the way, you know, we have some things we have to do before we'll just let you into our building. And I think we're, we're only going to get better in that area also. And in our tip line, this was our texted tip line, and we had a total during the school year of 352 tips received. As you can see, seven were at the elementary level, 36 were at the middle school, and 146 at high school. Now, the 163 non-identifiable, either, we couldn't, you know, it was, John did this, and that was your tip. And, so there was no way to identify, one, who John was, or be who the tipster was. But this is how they kind of broke down, we, we ended up with just a little under two tips a day, and we had 147 school management issues, 38 bullying, and I'll touch on the school management. That's, that's everything from, and I don't think I'd surprise anybody in the room, that's, you know, the teacher looked at me mean, that's a school management issue, or that's where we funnel it and categorize it. And, and we still forward that, and it still gets dealt with, but, you know, it's, it's not the thing that school police is going to be involved with or jump into, other than tallying it. We dealt with 38 bullying issues, drugs, and as you can see, we can read through all of them, but you folks, you see it there. The tobacco and the vaping has gotten big, and a lot of those, I'll be quite frank, will fall under the non-identifiables. It's Johnny smoking a Juul in the bathroom, and that's the tip. We have no way of knowing what school, we have no way of knowing who Johnny is, so some of that is there. And, and the tip line actually has the ability to punch that information in, it's just not getting done.
You know, you don't know probably, but I'll ask, your gut feeling of the 352, you think most of them were students that turned in the tips?
Yes. Yeah, I, it's.
That's awesome. I, I.
Swinging for the fences, yeah.
Getting to make the tip call is critical, it's huge.
It's huge. And, and the reality is, is kids don't talk on phones anymore, they text. And having the ability to text that tip in is huge. I will tell you, most of them are text tips, the majority. We, we have, I won't begin to be able, I could get the numbers, but I don't know them off the top of my head, but we have a handful of voicemails left on that line, but that is a minority compared to the text, and, you know, the, but, as I've said before, and I've told everyone before, that the thing that, that makes this a win for us is, yeah, we had 352 tips, and there were times where it got silly, but we were able to deal with four personal crises, and we were able to deal with some of them after normal school hours on weekends, and we were able to get local law enforcement involved, and get parents involved, and, and get Rhonda Mammon's counselors involved. That's the win.
That's right, it takes one win.
If, if every, every other one was garbage, but we dealt with the four personal crises, and my. my opinion, that's our win.
So I apologize if you said this, but has that stopped 24/7?
Yes, ma'am.
By a live operator?
Yes, well, it gets sent to a live person, yes. We don't have the ability to talk back and forth-
Okay.
-but it gets sent to a live person 24 hours, 7 days a week, 365 days a year.
Jim, I should make a comment. So while we might consider your job as physical safety, so much of what I'm seeing here is also emotional, especially in terms of school management issues, personal crisis, safety risks, that's a big part of this as well.
And I'll say that because of those, what you're mentioning, is why one of the trainings that we brought in from Drury, the Drury Police Academy this year, at the beginning of the school year for our officers, was just verbal communication and verbal de-escalation. And it was, it was a four-hour class of, this is a better way of talking to the people you're going to deal with. It was phenomenal. It was a really good course. So our upgrades, thank goodness for Proposition S. It was, you know, obviously, it wasn't a want as much as it was a need. The need that we were able to do things like secure vestibules at 31 buildings is just, you're just not seeing this, I'm not seeing it, and I have a lot of friends that are SROs around the state, and you're just not seeing this anywhere else, not at this level. All our doors and locks were assessed for locking capabilities, they were upgraded as needed. The intercoms were evaluated for their ability to work, quite frankly, and where they weren't working, new intercoms and cabling and everything were installed. The one that we love at school police, obviously, is the radio coverage and cellular coverage was audited and upgraded, and will be, continue to be upgraded. So we'll be able to be in any one of our buildings and communicate solely on radio with our dispatch center. 700 additional cameras, security cameras were added to make sure that we could see every exterior door, and that's, that's another huge ability. And just so everyone knows, those 700 cameras, they're not monitored, but if we get a trip at an exterior door, an alarm trip, if you will, our dispatchers who are on 24/7, 365, can actually pull those cameras up and see what's going on. And it's, it's an awesome system that, you know, Bruce Douglas was a huge part of. And it's now a centralized video management system that is really, it's so user-friendly, I'm able to use it and use it fairly proficiently. And the cameras, the technology is phenomenal. I mean, you can really, we had a deal at an elementary school, and we were able to figure out who the three girls were and look at them well, and not, and just zoom in. And we were able to figure out what vehicle they got into, which sped the process up by at least an hour for school police. So our next steps, we're revising what the Alice, the Alice training that we'll be providing. It will be a refresher. Okay, you've had Alice before, and remember, this is what it is, but we're also going to include things like tabletop exercises. Once again, we're wanting our staff members to think their way through some of these things, because it's, all I can tell you is, when it goes bad, everything gets thrown out, and people forget what they've been taught. See, sometimes you've got to think your way through. It'll become, be combined with mental health training that'll be provided by Rhonda's staff, Rhonda Mammon's staff, and it'll be a total of two hours. We're going to deploy the district-level threat assessment team, or threat team, as a means to monitor our threats. You know, we're going to deploy the visitor management system, that's done. It's at all the sites, school sites, and you all know how I feel about that. And then, as the vestibules at Central and Park view are designed, the upgraded camera system is going into, into the schools at both those sites. And I think that's it for me. Any questions?
We'll have time for Q and A at the-
Yes, sir.
Wait until the end?
Yeah, I think just to keep it rolling, and to hold those until the end, and we'll address as-
I'm going to ask for your comfort level as to how you are, if you're still all right. Good deal. So I'm here to talk about health resources, and I'm always excited to talk to you about that, because it's all about reducing those barriers to learning so that we can have some success for improved attendance and educational success for our students. So here's a big slide that has a lot of information on it, and as we reported last year in our Ready, Set, Supply, we had a very successful start, and this was our second year, and so I have some updates mid-year. But just to tell you, we did increase our partners from 55 to 68, and they increased the number of schools from 17 to 20, and they served over 7,000 students with supplies. So very positive results by bringing those supplies directly to the classroom. And then you can see the number of students that we have that have significant health concerns and conditions, and why that's important for us is to make sure that we're making those connections to those medical resources, and being, being able to create those plans of care, so that, again, they're getting the assistance that they need so that their health outcomes are better, and then also their attendance can improve, which definitely increases their educational success. And guess what? Our flu vaccinations were up yet last year, so we had a great time with increasing that, and we've got more to come, and I'll show you a slide on that. Addressing food insecurity is definitely the standard operating procedure for us, and so you can see the numbers there. And in addition to that, we definitely are continuing to work with multiple departments to make sure that we're addressing those needs of those kids who happen to be skipping meals, or we're noticing that they're getting the free box each for three times in a row, and those kinds of things, so that we can make those connections with those students to see what's happening and how we might help them. And then also, we still are continuing with our farm-to-school efforts, too, our tower gardens and education, and using some of that homegrown food, if you will, at those school sites and serving those to kids. And then we continue to work with our medical and dental community partners, and I'm going to share with you some great things with that, too. So this is a metric that was devised this year for us to do some comparisons, and as he was, as Brett was talking about earlier, this is a comparing FY18 to 19, and looking at the overall percentages of those that actually receive flu vaccines versus from year to year. So in the 1718 year, the elementary students, there were about 2,217 elementary students that received it versus 2,300 at the FY19. So then it just looks at those differences in all of those categories that were, that he talked about earlier. So overall, our elementary students did better, and they participated at a higher rate than our middle school and our high school students. And then elementary and high school students in free lunch also increased by 2%, so there's an increase there from FY18 to 19. Now, middle school, you can see, we don't like red, and there's red all the way down here, so we've got some work that we need to do to increase our middle school participation, because overall, it went down. And even significantly for our students that are in the ELL program, that went down by 6% from the year before. So we've got some, we're making sure that we're, that our applications or our permission forms are translated appropriately to, and reaching out to those students whose parents might have difficulty in filling out the application, and making sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do with that. High school looked fairly well as far as participation rates, because they increased in all of those areas. So we like green, as Brett said, so all of those are greens, we really like that, and so you can see in a number of all those areas that they increased by 3% there. So we really are focusing in on not only how many did we give, but what kinds of students participated and what didn't. So that impacts our plan for this year as well. So next steps, we want to make sure that we're working with our partners to make sure that we're providing that support for our students. And she mentioned earlier, our PTA Clothing Bank and Shoe Bank, and they do a phenomenal job with providing us with, with clothing supports for our students. Care to Learn also does the mobile clothing closets at 19 of our school sites, they're expanding for this next year, so that's pretty amazing for us, because last year, they served over 5,000 students and almost $10,000, $10,000 clothing items. So it's great to be able to have those emergency clothing items right there at the school site for our students. So that's a great increase for us. And then we also want to make sure that we're increasing our flu vaccines at all of our grade levels, and we've got a multimedia and communication plan that we're implementing, and we're actually starting earlier, because that was one of the concerns that came out from parents last year, was that you're not giving them early enough in the year. So we'll be starting on the 23rd of September this year, so almost a month earlier than we've done so in the past. And we have great participation from Jordan Valley, from Mercy, and from Cox, and from the Health Department to help support those flu vaccine programs that we have at those school sites. And then I also want to mention, too, the Tooth Truck, and their phenomenal work that they do. So last year, they served 777 students, and that makes a significant impact, especially if you know, if you've ever been having dental pain, oral pain, you know what that means, and that is a disruption to your health, but also a disruption to your education. So they do comparisons every year and look at what would happen if they didn't go onsite. So onsite, they get their, they complete their treatment plan, and that's done in 30 minutes. But if they would go offsite to have those same services, typically, students will miss a half a day to a day of absences, so they don't come back after they've gone to the dentist. Here, they get their service and they return, and just looking at those kids, if had they gone offsite, that was a difference of 649 days of attendance that we saved, because those kids got the care that they needed right away onsite and back in school, which is truly phenomenal. And then we're getting ready to pilot our Community Health Worker Program at four of our elementary sites, well, one of them is our combination, Westport, K-8, but we're partnering with Jordan Valley, and many of you have probably had the information regarding the 90,000 folks in Missouri who've lost their Medicaid or are on the verge of losing Medicaid. So we want to help, help our parents get those students back on Medicaid, so one of their roles is going to assist us to be able to help those parents who've lost their services, because that way then we can get them back and enrolled in MohaveNet, and then also connect, making those important connections to those resources that are available within the community in a timely manner. We also see them going on home visits in the future with our attendance visors as well, because we're also going to be piloting telehealth as well. So it's going to be exciting, and I'll have some great news for you in February to tell you what we've done so far with that program. Okay, that's it for health. Now let's talk about mental health.
I had to get up and stand up a little bit, I was getting kinda-
It's getting late, isn't it, Rhonda?
It is. And you know what? I always say the best for, say the best for last, although I'm not last. Dr. Raine still has, has a little bit of information to share. But what I want to talk for just a few minutes about are some of the things that we're doing within the school counseling department in the area of social-emotional health. It is kind of good news, bad news sort of thing, because there are a lot of really good things happening, but we also have identified some real challenges, and we are taking steps to try to, to help our students that are having mental health challenges. So what I'm going to show you tonight are some things that we're doing in the district, some updates about things that you already are aware of. So as you know, that what we primarily do is try to identify and collaborate with our community agencies, community partners, to expand access. And there's a really big expansion going on with Burrell that I'm going to talk to you about. We also continually evaluate and update our school counseling curriculum in the area of prevention to try to help our students learn coping skills, learn ways that they can help themselves, basically, or teach them about relationships so that they know where they need to go if they're in distress. We also have a chance to train our, our school personnel. The district has put a lot of emphasis on training, additional training for our staff, so that they'll be able to better recognize when our students need additional help. Some of the highlights are the mental health awareness training that we did during second quarter. Jim talked about the Alice training, this was the additional two hours of training that our staff were able to participate in. The school counselors facilitated those at their sites. We emphasized the impact of mental health on school violence, trauma-informed schools, suicide prevention, and bullying prevention. During the second quarter, there were approximately 3,000 of our staff that participated in the training. We, we really didn't require everyone to do it, only those that have daily direct contact with students, so the number's a little bit lower than our total number of SPS staff. The second major highlight that I want to talk about for a minute is our partnership with Burrell. As you know, we expanded those services tremendously within the Hillcrest Theater pattern last February. During that time, Burrell was able to provide additional case management, individual family therapy to students and families. We had 536 that were referred out of the Hillcrest Theater pattern, with 204 receiving some sort of service either from the support specialist or the school-based clinician. The next slide will tell you how that compares to the year before, and you'll see a significant increase. The third thing I want to tell you about is the Kickapoo High School pilot project and the teen, teen mental health first aid, and that training was brand-new to the United States. Kickapoo is one of eight schools chosen to participate in that pilot. Two of our counselors went to a training in Washington DC to be able to facilitate that, and in the spring of last year, they trained all of their 10th graders in the mental health, teen mental health first aid. And that was phenomenal. This year, well, I'll talk about that on the next step, so. Here's some of our data in regard to the Burrell expansion. In 1718, we had six clinicians as part of the contract that we have with Burrell. During that time, there were 393 referrals with 209 students enrolled. From February through the end of July, we had a total of 809 referrals, 353 enrolled students with 11 clinicians. So we have had a huge increase there. So as we, as we roll into next year, or this year, and with the additional expansion, we are going to see that continue to increase. When I said good news, bad news, the fact that we had 809 students in our district that the staff recognized had some mental health challenges that they needed, they felt like they needed to refer them on, not all of them took advantage of it, as you can see, not all, some of them were referred to other sources, so that, the breakdown of that's difficult to know for what reason they didn't enroll, but, but even though we had 809 of them, that's, we're getting help for those students that may not have had help.
So that clinician, support specialist, just so I'm clear, are they Burrell employees who are being designated as, they're not our employees?
No, they are all Burrell employees, but they are housed at the school sites. They see the students.
Just wondering, what number would you think you could make, is it 18, 20, instead of 11? Like, I'm wondering if you think you'd have enough?
No, that's not enough.
Right.
No, we will continue, and as, the challenge, and I talked about this last spring, the challenge is going to be to hire enough qualified people in our area. Right now, there, there probably are not going to be enough clinicians out there that are ready to go to work to fill the need at this point, but we're, we're hoping to be able to do that as we move forward. We hope Burrell can.
Do you know what that number would be if you got to, budget was not an issue, which it is, of course, budget was not an issue, what is the ideal number?
The ideal number of-
Of support specialists, our employees would do.
Well, the clinicians are licensed professional counselors. The support specialists are bachelor's level personnel who've been trained in skill building. They actually are in the buildings every day to assist with them in the classrooms, like our behavior specialists, sort of. But the clinician creates the treatment plan for the overall process for them, and then the support specialist, care- And then the support specialist care, helps carry that out on a daily basis.
So would you be happy if that 11 was 15 or 20, or what is the ideal number?
If we served, if we served 10% of our population, which is the national average for mental health issues being addressed through school-based services, that would be around 2,500 students, which is three times what we have now. So I would say we'd need close to 50 specialists.
You really need one in each school?
We need one in each school.
More than in some?
We need one in each school, you're exactly right. And that's not taking away anything from what the school counselors do because they have a totally different role in the building. And so, you know, the school counselors can help with that. They can help identify, they can help on those day-to-day crises that students have. But the ongoing therapy that a lot of our students need in order to be successful as they head on to the next stage in their lives, these are the folks that can help with that.
The good news is we're one of a few states that is getting to grow into this area. And our partnership with Burrell is, I think, going to be a model for that. And you'll see as next steps, some of the growth we're already projecting to help.
That's a good start, but we're not done.
We've got some ways to go.
We're leading the pack.
Yeah, okay.
Burrell's doing well.
I'm not saying we're there yet, but we're, but it has grown significantly across the state. Schools are doing this.
Yeah.
Okay. So the other data that I want to share with you, which is not necessarily data that is happiness. But this year, for the first time, we actually started in January of 2018. So second semester of the year before, we started requiring the counselors to track the number of students. And this is K-12, the number of students who have disclosed suicidal thoughts or exhibited self-harming behavior. So for the whole school year last year at 1819, you'll see there's 658 students that disclosed to their school counselor that they were considering suicide. That's a little bit different from what we see on the youth survey that's given because that's self-disclosed information, and we don't know individually who those are. But we know we have a fairly high percentage that's reported on our climate and culture scorecard. And I talked about that a little bit in the narrative, if you read it, that goes along with that. These are actual students that have come to their counselor or to another trusted adult in their building. I will say sometimes, but they usually get to the counselor at some point if they disclose that. And the other number that's really alarming are those that are exhibiting self-harming behavior, which could be cutting, it could be some other self-destructive kinds of behavior. That in and of itself is not really considered a suicidal disclosure, but it can also lead to that, and it also indicates that there's depression and anxiety going on. So those are, those are very high numbers.
Do you have a, a breakdown of elementary, high school?
I do have that, yes. I didn't, yeah, I've got it by, they're, they're reported by individual counselors.
Which ones?
Well, the highest is definitely-
Is it high school? Is it high school?
Middle school's running a close second.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if it was middle.
But the, the really alarming one are the number, the elementary is increasing also.
So, but basically, um, this is a benchmark?
This is the benchmark, yeah. And, and you know, really with all the awareness, the training that we're doing, and I've heard Jill talk about this in relation to mandated reporting too. The more, the more information you get out to the adults about how to intervene and how to help students and what the red flags are, the more likely they are going to report or somebody's going to report it. So the increase may be because we're doing some of those other things that, you know, in terms of the awareness piece.
I mean, is that good news or is that bad news?
Right, I mean, it's, it's debatable, it's debatable.
Yeah, you know.
But at least we're able, when we're aware of it, we can do something to step in, notify parents, get the students some help.
And that speaks markedly to the skill and the care that your counselors give. It's just amazing the work they do. And I predict those numbers are higher next year.
I do too, I do too.
But if it's going to be out there, I'd rather know about it, so.
We'd rather it be disclosing, so we get supports. That's what the mental health supports are going to help our counselors be able to.
That's great that you're doing all that, I'm real pleased.
All right, so our next steps, we're going to continue to expand the partnership with Burrell. We're going, this semester, right now, we're moving into the Parkview feeder pattern and the Early Childhood Center and Studio Alternative Center. Second semester, we'll be adding Central to that. So there'll be almost two-thirds of our district schools that will be in that expansion. While that's going on, we're able to move the clinicians that we have contracted with Burrell, that we have the budgeted money, that we actually have been paying for that service. They're going to be supporting the two feeder patterns. So all five of the clinicians will be able to support Glendale and Kickapoo instead of just one. So with the addition, that's going to, that's going to help all of us, or all the schools. We're also continuing to receive a grant from Community Partnership to offer the monthly sessions of youth mental health first aid for our staff. And again, continuing that awareness piece so that staff know what to do when they suspect that a student is, is depressed or considering suicide. So that will continue. We're also received additional funds to train counselors from Parkview and Central to be trained in the teens. So those two schools will be offering it to all of their 10th grade students for next year. So that, that will be a huge step for us to be able to do that.
Do you two want to exit interview on the people who were trained in that so that we know if they deem it to be valuable?
Yes, we have, they do a complete, in fact, they do follow-up every month. There's a survey that goes out to everybody that is a trained first-ader, is what they call youth mental health first-ader.
And are they expressing pleasure that they-
Oh, absolutely. In fact, I had one of our, one of our teachers just in the May session came up to me and said that you need to require that for every new teacher that comes into the district. The difficulty is it's an eight-hour training. And to be able, again, you know, to say, you have to do this, take them out a day of school, you know, we've got the sub-issue that, you know, to do it in mass quantities all at once makes it really difficult.
Percentage-wise, how many have gone through it?
As a-
Round number?
As a, not a number, percentage-wise.
Like just around, I don't presume you have it exactly, but like, do you have some concept of how many have gone through it?
Well, I, it's a pretty low percentage when you're talking, because we have only 30 a month that go through it, and that, that's the most we can take in one session.
I just wonder if we could do something smaller that at least gave them some exposure?
Well, that's what our, the next goal is, our staff mental health awareness training. We've taken a lot of the information in the youth mental health first aid and put it in that presentation for staff. And we are going to be able to continue that again this year with a one-hour version. So we're going to particularly have, place emphasis on suicide and bullying prevention on that. So that's it for-
You don't have one happy, positive thing to say, you're going to end?
See, happy, positive, yes, we have a lot. Oh, Jill, that's a tough question.
We're expanding supports for children.
What?
Thank you.
We're expanding supports for children, first of all.
Yes.
Access to middle schools.
That's great.
The teen mental health will pay off.
Yes, I really think so.
You know, our speaker talked about trauma and things that aren't mental health-related. I mean, the kid gets fired from his job.
Yeah.
Kids know. And if kids are trained in that, they can, a lot of, I mean, they're not professionals, but if they recognize that, then they can start a process to talk to the counselors or report or whatever that, you know, whether it's they lost their job or there was spousal abuse at home, whatever, something that's not meant, yeah. Lost somebody close, not a mental health issue per se, but it is a trauma issue that they've got to deal with. And kids know it before anybody else does, the friends do. And it's just, I think there's a great opportunity there. And I was really glad you had the trauma.
If you ever had the chance to go sit down on one of the sessions, I, I spent the day at Kickapoo one day while they were doing it out there last spring. And it's pretty amazing to see the students interacting with each other and supporting each other during that time too.
That's a great program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to bring us to the finish line. So I am back to talk about Strategy 1.1.4, which is the one that we added in the fall of last year to really focus on the needs of under-resourced and underrepresented students. And the reason we added this is because last year in the fall, the data indicated, in that first report that said, okay, there's some inequity in the system that needs to be addressed. And so that, this strategy was added. We also added one to Focus Area One, Goal Two, too, that focused on the needs of under-resourced and underrepresented kids, which we'll talk about in October. So, as I said, this section again is going to be these priority metrics laid out, kind of how the engagement one, or exactly how the engagement one was laid out. So the upcoming slides are going to be presenting the discipline and attendance priority metrics over a two-year period. And then we're going to do a gap closure analysis after each of those big charts that appear on the slides. So there are three discipline metrics, percent of students with, discipline, discipline frequency rates, and loss of instruction due to discipline. And then there are two attendance metrics, which are the 90/90 and the ADA. And so I'll walk you through these as we go through each of these and kind of, again, kind of try to draw your attention to some patterns that you see. Again, the important piece is that gap closure analysis to try to determine where the gaps are getting worse, okay? So the first one here is percent of students with discipline. So what does that mean? What is the definition of that priority metric? That metric means just the percent of kids that got sent to the office for a discipline issue. It's coded in the system in E-School as a conference. It might have been a conference with a parent. It might have been a conference with the principal. It could be ISS, it could be OSS. So it's percent of kids that got sent to the office for an infraction.
So this is all discipline and for this purpose is treated equally?
It is, yes sir. It is all discipline is treated equally. So it's referrals to the office. So again, we've got the student subgroups going along the left-hand side. And then we've got FY19 numbers compared to the prior year. And we want to see lots of green. The other thing I want to draw your attention to, not to confuse you, but anytime we're talking about a discipline priority metric, negative actually is good because we want that to go down. We want the percent of kids that are getting disciplined to go down. We don't want it to go up. So that's why the negative that is indicated is highlighted in the green. So we want to see lots of green, we want to see not so much red. So you can tell on that site, we made, we made some good progress on this metric, which we'll highlight in the summary slide. Then when you do, you apply the gap analysis to it, we go free versus full, white versus black, white versus Hispanic, IEP versus non-IEP, and ELL versus non-ELL as our subgroups. You can see where the, we closed the gaps, and then you can also see where the gaps increased. So our biggest win here is our, between our white and black students at the high school level. That gap decreased by 10 percentage points because we flipped back to a positive on the gap analysis. The negatives, negative areas, minus seven, minus six, minus six here on white versus Hispanic kids. And that was present on, on this first slide here. You've got red across the board, which is an interesting trend. We talked about that this morning at ELT, looking at that metric as it moves across.
Important again, get both numbers. You want a status number and a, kind of a growth number and a gap closure number. So those two charts give you each one of those perspectives into the data.
So when you go to the summary slide, again, I want to train you, kind of track your eye to this. So there are 40 cells under these different columns. There are 40 separate cells. We moved over half of them in the right direction. We moved well over half. 26 of them moved in a positive direction. Five moved in the wrong direction, and nine remained unchanged. And then you've got kind of our highs and lows. So the highest gap was ELL students at the high school level. And then Hispanic students had notable increases like that across all grade levels, district, elementary, middle, and high. And then when you go into the gap analysis, so that's that slide, there were 16, there's 16 cells here that we needed to move because we still had some that had no gaps. So we're not focusing on those, focusing on the ones that have a gap. We moved nine out of 16 in the right direction, so over half moved in the right direction. Jill, question?
I'm trying to make this question make sense in my head. So are we applying the same disciplinary standards that we were applying before, like apples to apples? Or have we also changed something philosophic about what we discipline the children?
That is a great question, and I'm going to get to that slide in a minute. That is an excellent question.
I'll wait.
So for last year, there was no disciplinary code change. So those two years, you see no code change, with the exception of the one modification we made to vaping policy because of that increased vaping. So there, at the point, there was no code change. There are code changes coming with the business.
Well, it wouldn't just be code, I appreciate that, but it could be code and it just could also be practice.
Right. So that's completely run at the building level, and there's no administrative practice that was changed.
But we have had a lot of administrative change.
Yeah, certainly, those models.
So, so nine, so on the, on the gap analysis, nine of the 16 go in the right direction, five move in the wrong direction, two didn't change. And so the largest gaps again are between white and Hispanic kids at the district level, elementary level minus six, middle school level minus seven. And then the greatest decrease in a gap, like I said, was 10 percentage points between black and white students at the high school level. So that was a, a point of celebration, but we still have some work in this metric to do when you look at it through the gap analysis lens. So that leads us into the next metric that connects to that percent of kids with discipline. This is discipline frequency rates. So what does that mean again? The discipline frequency rates means the nu, so we've got a percent of kids that get sent to the office, they get in trouble. This is, the frequency is how often are they getting sent to the office? Of the kids who have a referral, how often are they getting sent to the office?
Same kid?
Those same kids that had, that had a referral, how often?
The good news is there's a decrease in the number of kids and then decrease the frequency of those kids also. Or are those kids still getting disciplined at the same frequency rate? So this is kind of digs.
That's what this metric is trying to get at, is if those same kids that are getting referred down to the office over and over and over again. So we want that number to go down. So again, same analysis on this. It's over a two-year period based on student subgroups. Want to see lots of green. Again, the discipline metric is negative because we want it to go down. That's why it's negative. And we want to see less red. So you can see as, how we trend across district, elementary, middle, and high school where the greens play out and where the reds kind of play out. So then when you apply the gap analysis, this one is not as green as the last was. This is a little bit more red. You can see kind of where the gaps are at. So the, where we did our best work, where we closed the gap, the greatest was down here, IEP versus non-IEP kids at the high school level. The greatest gap was between ELL and non-ELL students at the high school level. That's where the gap got wider. And then you have other areas where the gap increased here because there's, there's still more red on this chart than there is, was the last one. So when you go to the summary, of those 40 cells on that first chart, we closed, again, the gap, this is a celebration point for us. We closed the gap over, on over half of them. 25 of them went in the right direction. 15 however, moved in the direction, we need, we need to work on that. And then you go into kind of the highs and lows at the district level. ELL students had the greatest increase in discipline frequency rates. They also had the highest increases at the elementary and high school level. And ELL students in the middle school level had the greatest decrease in discipline. And then regarding that gap analysis, there are 17 cells that we needed to move. Five of them moved in the right direction. 11 moved in the wrong direction, and one didn't change. And so the largest gap increase was between ELL and non-ELL students at the high school level. The largest decrease was between IEP and non-IEP students at the high school level. So that's discipline frequency rates. Then queues us up for loss of instruction, which this is probably the one that we're most happy with right now. So what is, what's the definition of loss of instruction? Loss of instruction is days missed due to being in ISS or being OSS, being kicked out of school. And when you think of the number, it's actually days missed due to that issue. And I'm in in-school suspension or I'm out-of-school suspension. So again, yeah.
That, that makes good sense to me. Do you know what percentage of the previous population that got sent to the office for smarting off in class or whatever the case may be that might not warrant in-school or out-of-school suspension? Do you know what percentage is representing that larger population?
That's a good question. Off the top of my head, I don't. But those are coded in the system. We could, that can be tethered out because we can look at, most of those kids are probably going to end up in a conference or some type of attention. It's not going to end in the ISS.
Would not show up.
They would not. The conferences do not show up here. This is the principal applied discipline that caused the kid suspended, either in-school or out-of-school suspension.
We'll know the incidence and the rates, right? So this is the number of days that those kids accumulated on average per child. But we also would have the incidence and what percentage of incidents resulted in suspension versus non-suspended.
Interesting to see it disaggregated. It's not, it's not cruel to make sense of this, but I think to see the, the less significant versus the more significant led to loss of instruction.
Why is ISS, loss of instruction, when they're in school getting their assignment?
You're not with your core certified teacher in your content area. You are removed from your certificated, access to your certificated teacher in your content area. So it's a, we believe that's loss of instruction because you're not with your core teacher.
You don't think so?
No, I'm not any, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, that's a certified teacher in that room, ISS, you may not be certified.
I'm not getting like the Spanish lecture or the calculus lecture with it, right?
But if I'm a math teacher, I'm getting math instruction. If I'm the ISS person doing math and they send the math in there. If I'm certified at middle school, I'm certified in probably one academic area, so.
But they may have a classroom of students that are with them all day. And so, these students are working on their math and their science and their social studies and their communication arts, so they're not teaching to them. They're just doing whatever paperwork.
Or they may be getting better instruction because they're one to four instead of one to 25.
We can hope for that.
I'm not getting any instruction, but I give them time. But, I mean, I'm just thinking back to my days, and I'm not sure anyone that left my classroom to go to ISS got the kind of instruction I was able to provide in my classroom.
Maybe that's what we need to improve rather than worrying about just the instruction.
At the high school level, I'd say that'd be difficult, but it'd be grand if all your ISS people and content teachers had really.
We just think anytime you remove students from their regular classroom environment where the relationship between students and teachers should be much deeper because it's regular. And that is a suspension, so that's a loss of instruction. It could be called a suspension rate. We termed it loss of instruction rate. I mean, we could term it either way.
And having worked in.
It's much better than being out of school, certainly.
Having worked in the elementary division, I mean, we don't have ISS teachers. So, it's parents typically that, the kids when they're assigned to ISS, or the principal keeps. And I usually just kept them with me, so. Okay, so this is loss of instruction. So, again, it's the number of days lost due to ISS or OSS. We're wanting to see student attributes on the left-hand side comparison two-year to two-year. So, we see success on this, on this chart here with lots of green and just two reds. And then, when you apply the gap analysis to it, you can see how the students, free versus full, white versus black play out, white versus Hispanic across all those cells there. The largest increase in the gap was down here at ELL versus non-ELL. And then, our largest gap increase, where we were able to close the gap, was between white and black students at the middle school level. So, the summary slide there, again, is we had 40 cells, 37, 37 of them moving in the right direction. So, we did good work there. Two moved in the wrong direction, one remained unchanged. And the ELL students at the elementary level had the highest increase in loss of instruction. And then, when you look at it through the lens of the gap analysis, there were 13 gaps that needed to be moved. We moved 10 of them in the right direction, three moved in the wrong direction. And the largest increases were in subgroup gap was at the highs between white and black students and ELL students versus non-ELL students at the elementary level. The largest decrease in the subgroup gap was at the middle school level between white and black students. So, that ends the discipline metrics, and we're going to move into the attendance metrics. So, this is the 90-90 attendance metric. So, what that is, 90% of your students attending 90% or more throughout the school year. So, you can see, again, same analysis over a two-year period. Subgroups are along the left-hand side, and we're looking for lots of green. Obviously, you see elementary really carried us on this metric because they moved all of those into the green. They had positive gains across the board there. And then, middle and high school had a mix of red and green. So, then, when you apply the gap analysis to that, you can see where we closed the gap and where the gap increased. So, we made the most gains at the IEP versus non-IEP level at the high school level. So, that's where the greatest gap closed. And then, we had the greatest gap increase up here at white versus black students at the high school level. So, again, we're looking for green, we don't want to see red. So, the summary slide, out of 40 cells, we moved 20, half of them in the right direction. Thirteen moved in the wrong way, negative direction, and one remained unchanged. And then, you can see who had the highest. Black high school students had the largest drop in attendance. And ELL students at the middle school level had the highest gain in attendance. And then, when we apply the gap analysis to this, there were 16 cells that needed to move, eight of them in the right direction. And then, eight moved in the wrong direction, so kind of 50/50 there. The greatest increase in the gap was high school level between white and black students at minus 4.6%, and IEP students at the high school level experienced the greatest gains in attendance at 3.7% when compared to non-IEP students. That's one. So, this is ADA. Same analysis, analysis of subgroups over two years. Looking at the district, elementary, and middle and high school. We want to see lots of green, not so much red. Again, you can see elementary, lots of green on their column. And then, there's a mixture of that. In middle school, we've got quite a bit of green besides just element. High school, more red cells than greens. We've got some work there to do on the ADA metric. And then, when you apply the gap analysis to this, looking for the differences between the groups, you can see how that plays out with the percentages. So, we see green and red and about half and half there.
I'm not a math whiz, but I'm starting to note a trend in the positive changes in the IEP, non-IEP. Really focused there. One, do you agree that that's true, that I'm seeing a lot of green and other?
There's a trend there.
Do you have an opinion about what accounts for that?
That's a great question.
They deserve some credit.
I don't think we're ready to determine the cause, right? We're tracking data, we're working on program. Obviously, we believe relationships with students is a high driver of this engaging environment. We're going to have some academic components next month that will follow up on this, as well as student perceptions of relationships with teachers. It'll be interesting to see if that trend, if those things start to connect to the attendance data and the drop in discipline data.
They have personalized goals.
So, I guess what I want to say is, I recognize that a lot of what we're seeing tonight is sad or demoralizing or not quite where we hoped to be eventually. But if we can really talk about some positive things for a while, I would say the people who are working with the students for the IEPs deserve some credit for what they have shown so far.
For sure.
And we have to, we have to look at some of the positives here.
Yes, and we've had some success with some of our ELL students because you see lots of no gaps, and you do see, they've got some area green too. So, some of our folks working with those students need to be commended also.
Just because we can't always be talking about how we gotta do better, we gotta do better. I mean, we do, right? But we have to stop and tell them what a good job is.
Celebrate, celebrate, yes.
And I think if we look at the five core metrics, the attendance and the discipline, we see a lot of data to celebrate, and with that, with the team, this is part of that work. And, but there are still opportunities to improve. And we are going to continue to be incredibly transparent about that and try to be strategic about how we close those gaps.
And I think Jill raises a really good question. I mean, the data are provocative. There are many things that are moving in the right direction. There are a few things that are moving in the right direction, some are just standing still. But the data don't speak for themselves. It'll be really interesting to begin to explain, right? Because we've got empirical data. Question is why they're moving in, those data are moving in particular directions. And it's too early to know for certain why that is, but I think being able to unpack that is when we're really got something.
Yeah, that's amazing because I wrote, I'll just read you verbatim what I wrote. Lots of data presented here, very little discussion here about what was done to move numbers. And I wrote parentheses, "I don't need to participate in that discussion, but I sure hope our frontline folk are."
Well, I think that's the important thing that you might not think we've talked a lot about what was done, but we talked a lot about what was done. We've talked about all the school safety metrics. We've talked about the social emotional supports. We talked about the healthcare supports. So, those are specific strategies that are being deployed. And when you see those numbers move in the process measures, we hope they follow with performance improvements. But being able to apply, and that's always the heart in education, causal effect, right? From one to the next, because we don't have isolated situations where we can look at a.
Human beings are messy.
True study, I'd say. But we can learn, right, from where we see gains, study those gains, continue to deploy.
Yeah, I'd like to sit here a year from now and see more green wherever the subgroup is black. And I'd like to be told the story about how the district achieved those improvements. We have 1,950 kids in that group. And we saw red numbers across the board ranging from perception of school safety to getting flu shots. And perception of school safety is probably harder to move than flu shots.
They're both important.
But, yeah, clearly, they're meant.
Is, I mean, is research driven, and that drives, helps attendance.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, what, if we could get to why is that number the way it is? And what are the ways that we need to, and that, how do we, how do we relate to that subgroup in a way that we may not be, that we may not be related as culturally relevant anyway?
I think Brett will close with some things next up. I really address exactly what we're working towards. It's not going to be the end all be all, but it's our commitment. And you've been part of that commitment by budgeting resources.
Sure so.
So, again, this summary slide on the ADA, 26 of the 40 cells, that is a celebration point. So, I've got work to do, but we moved over half in the right direction. Ten went in the negative direction, four remained unchanged. And then, you can see, again, highlighting where the biggest gap was and where we also closed the gaps, that the black high school students, elementary schools, high schools had dropped in attendance since then. So, we still have some work to do on that front. Then, regarding the gap analysis, there were 16 gaps that needed to be closed. We closed over half of them. Nine of them closed, and six moved in the wrong direction, one didn't change. The largest gap increase was between white and black students. And the largest gap closure was between IEP students and non-IEP students at the, IEP students and non-IEP students at the middle school level, like Jill said, and then, ELL, non-ELL students at the high school level. So, celebration points on that ADA, and obviously, there's still, there's still work to be done. So, the next couple of slides are some of the things that we have been putting in place to work on this under-resourced, underrepresented goal, focus area. So, the first two slides are about this discipline code of conduct. So, last year, I led a team of about 16, or 16 people that reviewed the discipline code of conduct for, to ensure that what we're doing to kids, how we're disciplining kids is reasonable and appropriate when you compare them to 14, state, regional, and non, and out-of-state districts. The out-of-state districts were Memphis and Nashville, you know, Little Rock, large metro districts. The guiding questions that guided our work as we did this, and it started in December and ended in May, was how do we compare to peers? How can we use interventions prior to suspension to assist schools in, so we don't have to immediately resort to ISS or OSS? And then, are we using all these codes? And can some of them be condensed and deleted? Because we had 72 codes, 72 different ways you can get in trouble in Springfield Public Schools. So, that was a big one, was are we really using all these codes? Is this necessary, or is it overkill? We did. We revised the discipline code of conduct. It is in the handbook. It's been designed with those kind of four underpinnings, those frameworks supporting. Number one, the discipline is really there to support the academic success and personal growth of kids. And the second bullet point's my favorite. Apply it to teach and guide students to make good choices, not kick them out of school. That's not the point of school discipline.
But there are certain things that will be hard-stocked.
There are. And if you, if you open up the handbook, you're going to see OSS is still an option on multiple infractions. So, it's in-school suspension.
I appreciate you mentioning that because as you were speaking tonight and how we were talking about, oh, we want to reduce that, I was looking at the faces of the kids who were trying to learn in that environment that was disrupted by someone who couldn't behave well there. So, it's a complicated topic. But you do have to remember that we owe something to the safety and security of the ones who are sitting there.
Put your hand on a teacher's shoulder.
I wouldn't have your job.
Hard work to try to navigate both sides.
It is. It's a balance. It's a balance of supporting all kids and then also making sure we're applying discipline that's fair and realizing that kids are kids. Bullet point three, making sure that we totally believe revised scope and sequence gives administrators more flexibility to really adapt discipline to the unique needs of the kids sitting in front of them. And then, the last one is, as we can see with the metric, it's moving in the right direction. I think it will continue to move in the right direction on loss of instruction. Is, the goal of this is to try to keep kids in school, they're not losing instruct based on their behaviors that sometimes we can manage within the school without resorting to ISS or OSS. So, all administrators who handle discipline were trained on these changes in August, right before school started, we finished those a couple of weeks ago. So, that handbook's been, that code of conduct's been deployed, and we're excited to see what it does with these metrics. Be able to report some more really positive information to you in February when we come back with our mid-year report. Also, these are other things that we are currently doing. So, the first bullet is vitally important, based on this strategy 1.1.4 for the needs of under-resourced and underrepresented students. I'm Morrison, we're working together in the Equity and Access Office, and we are providing equity training to all student and non-student sites. So, everybody in the system, just like we did with Alice Training last year, will go through equity training this year during first quarter. We will get that training done by the mid-October to make sure student site has gotten it. As of tonight, LA told me there will be 29 sites trained as of this evening because we had some go this evening. So, we're already making progress on that goal. The second one is also important. So, all members, and I think, I think you're invited to this too. All members of SLT and Equity for Schools have an Equity Champion, a champion. We'll be, we'll go through one day of facing racism training provided to us by Missouri State University. That starts this month, and the majority of the trainings are in October. So, that'll be another piece, another important training piece that we layer on top of this strategy. And then, as you know, because Jill, Equity and Diversity Advisory Council is working to develop recommendations on how we can ensure our schools feel our welcome places, that all kids thrive, and we hope to get, we're excited to get those recommendations. I think in December is when we will get them and provide us some guidance on where the community thinks we need to go with these. Additional next steps that really, we think, connect to this strategy. Conscious discipline, so the central high school feeder pattern, we use Title IV resources to be able to do this. All schools in the central high school feeder pattern were trained, teams of teachers were trained. So, that's being deployed right now even as we speak in the central high school feeder pattern. That connects to bullet two. So, all elementary schools were trained this summer, kind of fall-ish, like Sunday and fall, it's this summer, on PBIS, and that was done in coordination with the age burning and Missouri State University. So, Jay kind of set the expectation that every elementary school is going to adopt PBIS as a discipline framework. You have the ability to tweak it to meet your needs, but everybody's going to be using this common language. So, we're excited about that. Third bullet, I already said this, implementing the revised code of conduct even as we speak to reduce loss instructional time. One of the things that you provided us, that I told the principals that I was training that we expect them to use, was the additional money for detention. So, this will be the first year that we've had a after-school. We have had a system-wide expectation because it's really been haphazard up until this point. And now, we've devoted resources to it to say, for minimal disruptive things, you need to consider using after-school detention first before we immediately go to suspension. And we thank you for giving us that budget line item, principals. Because I know when I was a principal, I didn't have anything like that. It was, it was up to me to be able to do it and pull it off. But now, we've got resources to apply to it. Last two bullets. A team's going to work to, and they're currently working right now, I think they met once, to assess the district's alternative program, and they're going to bring recommendations back by December of 2019 to look at maybe rethinking or reimagining our alternative programs. And then, the last one, we heard about this last board meeting with people with concerns about transportation. And we are committed to evaluate the current transportation delivery system, including eligibility distance, transportation of choice programs. The whole transportation scheme of the way they organize is on the table for review. So, that is it. So, the mid-year update that we'll come back to you will be February the 4th. So, we'll come back to you with an abbreviated version of this report. But again, we again, hope to show you that we're moving some of these actions. And for sure, we hope to see closure in some of those gaps between some of our student groups. And we're, you know, excited to roll our sleeves up and get busy doing this work. So, that being said, I will open it up for questions that you have and need.
Questions or comments, or Brett?
I have several questions and some comments. I saw them are really good. One, I do think that the board's, the priority metrics for this particular one of climate and culture outweighs everything else. That's the best dollar you can invest for a school's sake, that, climate and culture. Over buildings, whatever you want to do, that is critical. Because a lot of that will be taken care of if you can deal with the climate and culture. And I just appreciate the focus that you've done on, this whole thing was centered around climate and culture. And so, I really appreciate, that's your biggest return on investment, is changing that climate and culture, top to bottom, with students. I'm trying to think where to go here. One of the things I was going to ask about is, we talked about students' perceptions, we perception, what about staff? Was that, I was going to ask Tim, was that somewhere in a climate culture survey later on?
We do have, we did collect that through Panorama.
Okay, that's a difficult.
Most of that is typically reported in Focus Area 2, under Personnel.
Okay.
But we do have data around that.
I thought we had it somewhere, but I couldn't remember where it was. I just did the Oreo cookie here and didn't get the middle of it with the staff, and I just wanted to make sure that that was in there. Now I'm going to go back to the climate culture, and I'm going to, you won't want me to hear me say this again, but I'm going to say it again. I get tired of the soapbox. But, you know, I, I think we need an officer in every building, and I'm not talking about, I hear, well, we don't need them in elementary schools. Yes, we do, for lots of reasons. One is because they're not there necessarily to police anything, but they're there to support and provide that climate and culture. And I think there's nothing better than to have, first time kid sees a, it's in a very positive light. And so I think that, having that kind, same as clinicians, school-based clinicians, I think that's one that, another one that's, you need it everywhere. And I just think that helps set the tone for, I'm not talking about policing, I'm talking about, he may be playing basketball with the kids out there on the playground.
Much talk.
Well, I put a third grader, well, no, I won't say, I won't go there. I've seen Jim play basketball. I have not seen Jim play basketball, so I just threw that out there. I do, you made, I guess Charles and Tim both made, we just saw tons of data, and really it gets down to, next question is, so what? We got the data, now let's get the cause, what's driving it, what's doing it? And I think that's, now that you got the data, now what we do with it is really the funner. We are absolutely in the right direction. I mean, you can't, you don't know where you're going until you know where you started. Now we kind of know where we started. And I, I think that's, you know, yeah, there's a lot of reds, a lot of greens, and I think knowing what the greens are is just as important as knowing what the reds are, to know where we've been and where we're headed for that. Our last, this question, and I don't know, deals from a safety standpoint, deals with background checks, with volunteers, that kind of thing, and what we do with background checks for staff on staff, volunteers in the buildings.
So Amy Patton manages the volunteer management system, yeah. And so any, anybody who is kind of our stance on it, is anybody who's got, we have a reasonable expectation, if they're going to come in the building and possibly be along with kids, they have to be background checked.
That's what I want to answer the question.
Some of the questions with the new law is what kind of background check?
Exactly.
That's where we're waiting for some MSBA guidance, and we'll determine if there's any procedural changes.
Other than that, that's, I thought this was incredible information, really, really good. And as you said before, some, you know, got to start somewhere.
Well, I, you know, there's just so much information, but I, I want to, you know, really give a huge shout-out to the people that have been working so hard to bring us and so, a tremendous effort, and wasn't an easy, just go look somewhere and find. So a tremendous amount of work has gone into this, and, and a very open, transparent way, just to put it all out there. So we do have it, but I'm not sure that anyone can, as to why is this particular group doing better? This particular group is not, because the one thing we all know, especially if you've worked with students on a daily basis, they change. And their home lives change, and their perceptions change, middle school, high school kids. So where we, it's great, we have this information so we can start looking at trends, but it's certainly not going to provide us in any way, shape, or form, and I know that no one is looking any harder for answers than those of you that work at this every single day, year after year after year. Having been where many of you are, I know that, that's your life, and that you're looking at and trying to find those answers. So as a board, I appreciate that, but I don't know we'll ever find the answer, because you're working with children, and things change in their lives. When you start to see trends, that does help you at least. What you can do is come back with, back to us with recommendations, which is what we're so looking forward to from our EDAC Committee, is those recommendations of things that we can do as a board that might put some things in place. Because from the first time I sat on this today, the things that have changed have been significant, I mean, very significant, in the services to children, not just academic, but in meeting their needs to, so that when they come to school, they are at least somewhat prepared to learn. So just, you know, keeping in mind, keeping in mind, working with the kids that change, and their lives change, and their families change, but at least we have this great information available, and we do, and then you guys get to do the hard work of trying to figure out what it means, and then what we can do to help provide resources for you to work towards. Amazing, a lot to think about.
Jill?
Are we going around the table?
That's exactly what we're doing. Didn't you see the pattern?
I did. I wondered if I'd get skipped.
No.
I think it was brave to talk about the things you all have talked about, because it doesn't always paint us in the best light, but it's, of course, we'll stand by you in figuring out what we need to do next. I appreciated a lot of what my friend who was in the trenches like you for so much of her career, so she knows about it, but I can't help but getting back to this concept of 90% of life is shown up, and so getting them to feel comfortable and want to be is the biggest step, and I do trust you all to do it, so thank you.
I guess, when we look at this from an elementary level, and then we've got 30-some-odd elementary buildings, there's ob, and then there's a 0.2% or plus or something, you know, I'm thinking, we look at that as bad or good? And if, with 9,000 students, I, what, what is that? You know, is it a hundred students out of 9,000 that may be a little different, or 100 students, how better is that? Is that starting to, when, at what point is that starting to be significant? Because I, I mean, you've got to have a zero, and you've got to go one way or the other, or you stay the same. We don't want to, in a lot of those, we don't want to stay the same. We want to get better, but does it start being about the difference in students that are all of a sudden here one year than the year before? Because we have kids transfer in and transfer out that are all of a sudden disciplinary problems or something else, and they're already gone. They're out of the district, they're someplace else. So it's, to me, those, we need to look at, can we look at, are these building level before their district level? And are there like schools that are making bigger differences? Because we've got a school, a lot of schools that can't be compared. And I get population, but if there's some like schools with like populations of all of the subgroup, and some are doing a lot better, it would seem, I mean, we can compare to Memphis and Nashville or whatever, I, I don't care, but we, we also need to, but we can control the Springfield. So if we have some schools that are doing better with like populations, and the numbers start being at the plus 10% at a high school, I mean, that's significant to me, and but so, and so it's minus 6%, you know, those are significant. So to me, we could, goes down to Springfield's schools with like populations, we may be able to come up with some things that are happening in some buildings that are different than others, and it's just simply a way of doing business each day, and it's not, it's not, yet as huge as it does to me with 9,000 elementary students, I'm going to move this a plus 2%. You know, that becomes huge to me, where if I was at a school with 300, and I moved it four or five, and somebody else went together, so I think we've got some ways of looking at that, that we, maybe we've got that, some answers right here already. Maybe the answers are already here in some of the areas, and we can just take what they're doing. So I'm, you carry, we have to have this, because we don't, otherwise, if we didn't have this, we wouldn't know where to start to say we've got an issue, or we don't have, or else we just don't look at it and say, we don't have any problems. You know, we're doing everything great, but I do think, I looked at the whole amount, the glass is more than half full. I really do, and I, so I think that, I don't want to, yeah, we look at things we're not doing real well, but if we're doing a lot of the, over half of them well, I think we've got a heck of a good start, is what I think.
Charles?
I feel pretty good about the visitor management system, the looking system. I mean, I've gone through it, and it, my only complaint is, I really look even more disreputable in the photo that comes out and do normally. And I was a little bit skeptical, all things considered, that it might be really burdensome, et cetera, and particularly now that there is a, a way that folks who might not have their other ways of getting access, right, after, you know, consultation of one time so we don't disenfranchise them. That seems to be working really very smoothly. I mean, I was, I have to admit, I was a little surprised that it was as smooth as it was. But I think Bruce is on to something too, and that is, my guess isn't, it's just a guess, that in terms of statistical significance, those numbers are so tiny, that it probably wouldn't be statistically significant, but that doesn't mean it's not significant in a broader sense, right? If we're moving in the right direction, that's significant. If we happen to be moving in the wrong direction, that's significant too. We just need to find a way to respond effectively to that. And I think the key here, I will not use the word that I don't like, and I will use the words, uh, dashboard. And I think if we, if we move away from sort of the ranking that is implied in the word that must not be named, and focus on how each school is doing, right, in and of itself, and we may be able to find some of those commonalities on schools or whatever the case may be. I think we'll be able, we're never going to find certainty about what works and what doesn't work, but we're going to see trends, and we're going to have things that give us more reason to believe these things are creating that inclusive culture that make kids want to go to school, et cetera. So, and I agree, I think the glass is, is at least half-full to what we do, but I think we're at least moving in that direction.
And I, I want to compliment administration on the sense of urgency with the equity training. The, the way you're going about it is incredibly assertive, and that, that's the way to be. And I, I'd like to soften it into my comments that I made a little while ago, where I said, a lot of data, but not a lot of, not a lot of how you're achieving it. It sounds to me like you guys are really working this hard, and I want to thank you and your team of presenters for, for the work that you are doing every day. It's, it's, and this data that you all are stewards over is a really important resource to help you in your learning. It's, it's remarkable stuff. And again, you guys started presenting this kind of information to us, was it last year? In, in these white papers, in these PowerPoints, and this is high-level, high-quality stuff, Brett, thank you for this.
Thank you. Amy St. John and her team in AAA, you can be commended also, so.
Thank you, John.
The white papers are, for sure. No, and I would just close up, and thank you so much for all the, we hear everything and really appreciate the feedback. It's a valuable dialogue to have at the board table, and the best practices and the identification of buildings, because these exist for every building, and they get them quarterly, and they share them with their teachers, because district-level data, captured at the district level and just reported to you, doesn't do us a lot of great, great work. But how do I take that? Know what's going on at my building level, and target, build goals upon that that aren't my teachers, and I can agree on, and our students agree on, because student goal setting's a powerful component of this work. So all of that exists, we're looking for the best practices, and that's what our executive leaders work with their principals to do, cross, on the expectations that we do in the fall, every year that we've done for the last five years, is internal site visits. So you have to go learn from a peer, right? And you take teachers with you to say, all right, where's the best practice when it's coming to attendance metric that my building might be struggling with? Or where's the reading score growing at the fastest rate, and what's their interview? While we do have systems of consistency, we do allow some autonomy, and there are things to learn from fellow leaders and fellow teachers, and lots of experts in the system do great work. So we hear that, we're trying to make sure that our culture is really around collaborating and identifying the best practice so that the whole system grows on you. So I thank the team also, Dr. Angel's team has delivered great work. This is segment one of a six-chapter story, right, that you'll be getting in the fall, that talks about what our 3,500 team members do on behalf of our kids to partner with our parents and our students. So pack a lunch next meeting, we'll be diving deep, not on the stuff from the regular meeting, but it's for this, right, so that we can help you understand the system at a greater level, because what we bring from that are budget recommendations and policy recommendations that, that align to this work. Because if you remember, what came to you in the spring was budget based on strategic priority. That's what employing some of the resources that we just talked about that are going forth. So it is a interwoven process, and it starts with good data, understanding our system, and then making, educating decisions.
So it is, yeah, it's strategic plan, budget, action, react, evaluation, strategic. Yep, it really is. Thanks. Thank you. And John? Well, folks, it, that, that was a two-hour, one hour?
It was less than two hours.
One hour and 58 seconds, 58 minutes, yeah. Pretty doggone good.
I'll go.
You're wasting your time already.
Yeah.
So some important things in the system.
Only part really interested in.
We are excited, as one of the additional investments, our chief Equity and Diversity Officer will join us next week, and will be an integral part of this, although can't do anything in isolation, she'll be team, so we're excited to welcome Avanya to the team. So please drop in and say hello over the next few weeks, and welcome her to SBS, so she starts the night. We've had incredibly successful groundbreakings, thanks to the board and the community who's attended at the Early Childhood Center, Delaware and Sunshine, such great celebrations. I put a lot of courage when you walked away from those places. Ready, set, supply, you already heard about the great celebrations there, and we'll add that to more celebrations next time. You already heard about PTA councils tomorrow, so if you're around and you want to show up a pardon to you in the morning, we would love to have you. We've also, you saw in the media, a great deal allowing dual credit access expansion to students, and I think it really fits into, while we're not talking about the academic component, talks about some of the gaps that we have in the system and trying to provide more equitable access to students to higher middle courses. So we appreciate Missouri State and the partnership that we're entering into with them to support students. Foundation, we want to celebrate their work. They did their first Give Back to School Day, raised nearly $10,000 over 24 hours, and those dollars will go right back to our students and teachers. And Brett's already reported on the equity training, that's exciting, and being moved forward aggressively, to your point. We've identified, and I think almost everybody has registered as board member, so appreciate everybody giving us feedback on that. And the last thing, enrollment's still a moving target. After Labor Day, we still have some show up this week. We're right around 24,750 K-12, which is down a little bit from last year with smaller elementary classes. But the K, the good news is kindergarten class was up a little bit, but we're, you know, moving out big classes at the high school level at this point, so it's less than 1%, but we're down about 200 students total. Overall, the system is up though, because when we did that, we also were adding pre-K. So we're at plus, and we have pre-K students on a regular basis, as we're filling every one of those seats to serve our students. So we'll keep you updated. The official enrollment count date comes late in September, that's when the department pulls their September enrollment, that's when it becomes hard and fast. Nothing legislative, other than get ready for session and we're being, for your initial round of feedback as we get ready to enter this session.
Are there any board comments?
No.
Just how awesome the open, or the groundbreaking's have been. Awesome.
They have been, and thank you for those of you who were able to schedule those, show up. You get noticed, people in the community notice you.
Okay, that's true, and I had been sure I was done talking, but what I really think is amazing about it is talking to the kids who are there, and how impressed they are to be a part of it and get to touch, and whoever was talking about it tonight, but when they thoughtfully, I just want to commend the people who are arranging these, because when they thoughtfully brought those Portland kids over to participate, boy, that was... Portland kids over to participate, boy, that was just top-notch.
And our teachers, I mean, you saw the Delaware, whole staff come over after school, after the big rain. And that means for the kids and their learning environment, their teaching environment. So you'll never say to me that that doesn't matter. The investment that our community has made is going to pay dividends for our faculty, our staff, our students.
And I told you this privately, told you, but boy, the president, the speaker, they know their stuff.
Inspiration.
Very nice. I don't want to be on the front page of the paper digging anymore, if I might make a request.
Right behind your head.
But everything else is awesome.
Yeah. All right. Good stuff. Looking at upcoming meetings, we have ribbon cutting, Weller Elementary, Friday the 13th. And this, this will make, yeah, this will make your heart sore, the Weller Elementary Playground ribbon cutting, Friday, September 13th at 9:30 a.m. If you can make it, be one.
Can't go to that. It's on the hat.
Several others, CPO Annual Meeting, some of you have responded saying you will be going on Monday, September 16th, that's two weeks from yesterday. And then our next regular meeting will be the next day, the evening of the next day, September 17th. And then we'll, in the month, by, I think all of us, maybe all of us going to the annual conference of our School Board Association, September 26 through 29, up at Tanter. All right. Your plus delta purpose statement, suggestions for Avanya and me to share with John, and we talk about those in our Board Officer meeting as we set the agenda. Now we do need to vote to go into executive session. The recommended action is that the board meet in executive session to discuss real estate matters. That's put in 021, sub-paragraph two of the revised statutes of Missouri.
So on behalf of our friend, Delina Leonard, who can't be here tonight, so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Jill and Charles, thank you. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And as was the audience for being here and for hanging in there all the way through. Good meeting. Thank you.
I think one question's two hours.
Just barely.
Yep.
We did it.